Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Castro Valley Unified School District Board Meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Have there been any changes to the agenda? All right, this is an action item.
I move approval of the agenda.
Second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak.
Yes, President Whitaker.
And I will vote yes. The motion passes five zero. Are there any public comments? Since there are no public comments, we will recess to close session and return at 6:00 PM. We look forward to talking to you soon. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Castro Valley Unified School District Board Meeting, and Happy International Women's Day. We are reconvening to open session. And we did take action in closed session. For Agenda Item 2A, resubmission pursuant to education code 48916A, case number 10-2122. In closed session on a motion by Trustee Raymond and seconded by Vice President Kuziak, the board voted five to zero to approve the readmission from expulsion for the student in case number 10-2122. And the board, on Agenda Item 2B, a legal counsel ongoing litigation subject to government code, section 54956.9A, D1 and 2, regarding the proposed settlement of claims related to e-cigarette and vaping issues. In closed session on a motion by Trustee Adams and seconded by Vice President Kuziak, the board voted five to zero to conditionally resolve litigation and other defendants regarding liability and damages. And we will go to Item 3D, admission statement. Trustee Howard.
We work together to provide safe, challenging, innovative, and culturally responsive learning environments to ensure that all our students feel respected and supported to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents.
Thank you. Right now, I will share the public comment instructions for those of you online and in the room. The board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must complete a request to speak form via the Google form at www.cv.k12.ca.us/publiccomment/ or the blue cards in the back, and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the board president, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called, and you will either come to the podium to speak or be unmuted during your turn and be allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes, unless the board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the board may listen to comments from speakers under public comment but can neither discuss nor take action on the issues presented. Now we get to move on to the fun stuff. Item 4, school report and recognitions. We have Marshall Elementary School with us. Superintendent Parveen.
Yes, we do. And we've got Principal Yvonne Rogers. Awesome principal, who's gonna start us off?
All right. Good evening, everybody. And Marshall represents in the house. We have a lot of great people here. So, thank you to Superintendent Amati and the board for allowing us to present on Marshall Elementary School. I am the principal of Marshall, Mrs. Rogers, and I am joined by three wonderful teachers, Ms. McCullough, Ms. Brown, Ms. Green-Curryell. We're very excited to give you a snapshot of what is happening at Marshall. So, over the past two years, Marshall has focused on writing as a continuum. When students were virtual and then attended school in the hybrid model, writing was a difficult academic skill to truly teach. As school staff, we noticed that we needed to support students with their writing, not just in the classroom, but with having a clear understanding of writing at each grade level. We have dedicated time during staff meetings and PLC meetings to have clear vertical alignment of writing and the writing expectations of each grade level. This continues to be an ongoing process. Teachers and staff are using many different avid strategies while teaching writing to students.
And since she left off with avid strategies, I will say that you probably already know that Marshall has been pursuing avid as sort of a school theme for quite a few years, ever since I joined, for sure, and we've been training in avid. And, you know, it's a process. It's a journey that we've been on. And sometimes we take a few steps forward. Sometimes it's like, wait, that's not working for us. Let's try again. And especially as a primary teacher, I will say that not everything that avid comes up with is, you know, primary focused. But that's okay, because we can take things and we can take what works for us. In general, I think for me, avid has been really valuable because it helps us sort of refine and refocus and just keep our eyes on what's like best practices in teaching. I notice that there's things from avid that we really like, that are also the things from GLAD that I really like and work well. So there's a lot of overlap between things that you would already find to be valuable teaching strategies. So anyway, with that said, one of the one of the avid strategies that they use a lot is note-taking, sort of writing to learn. Well, in first grade, we're still really learning to write in a lot of cases. So note-taking isn't always optimal, but we have found ways to sort of introduce it and scaffold it age appropriately. So as you can kind of see on here, we have a big project that happens just really at the end of the last trimester that we just finished, that we take notes, we become experts on a certain animal, and we take notes about that animal so that when it's time for us to put together our nonfiction chapter book, our informational writing, we can use that as a way to organize our writing, make sure we're staying on topic in each chapter, and really have true important facts to say in that informational writing bend. So we use our scaffolded notes in connection with Writer's Workshop. And yeah, then the whole final project, product, we take those notes, and as you can see, we put it together and make really, they do make chapters, you know, everyone. We have a red panda expert, and he said that, did you know that snow leopards are red pandas predators? That's all stuff that he already had in his notes, and he can go on to add more about that. I will pass it on.
Hello. When we're writing with our students, we really want to make sure that they write a lot, they write often. And so, on the slides that I have here, the first is just an example of just a free write. We want to give kids time to just write with their free choice of what they want to write about. The idea is that they will not have the pressure that we might, they might feel sometimes when it's a certain assignment and a certain expectation. So we want to give them chances to just do a lot of just writing, choosing what they want to write about. But the second thing that I wanted to show you is something that we have learned as an avid strategy is philosophical chairs. And philosophical chairs can be used in a lot of different ways, but I really like to use it as a good pre-write activity. And so it starts out, it's a, it's a long process to explain, so I'm just gonna shorten it. But in general, and for example, when I'm doing opinion writing, I will have students just write their opinion on something. I will give them, would you, a simplified one would be, would you rather go to the beach or go to the mountains? We get a little bit deeper as the year goes on. But then students need to decide which side that they would be on. They write their own opinions. But the nice thing about philosophical chairs is we give them opportunity, sometimes with this activity, to actually do research so that they have some facts to back up their opinion. Then they have an opportunity to go back and forth with the students who are on different sides. And we teach them ways to express their opinion, but we also teach them ways to listen to other opinions. And we teach them strategies for listening respectfully. It's okay to disagree, but you need to be respectful when you're listening and when you're giving your own opinion. So that gives them that opportunity to have conversations. Then through that process, they are listening to each other speak. And so they are listening to other opinions, but they're also gathering information. So it's a really great strategies for all students, but especially for struggling writers and our English language learners. Because if they're having a hard time generating some ideas, they're hearing other ideas from other students before they go to the writing process. And so the hope is that they will go back to their own writing and be able to use not only what they've learned on their own, but what they've learned from other students. So it's a great pre-writing activity, and it's used for a lot of different things. And then another slide that I have, it's kind of hard to see in the slide, but this is layered notes. And so sometimes when we're one application, we use it a lot of different ways. But, for example, I may have my students read an article. And in that article, they're looking for information, obviously. But in their notes, there may be writing vocabulary words that they may need to learn. They may be learning, writing down things that they think are super important in the article. They might be looking for the main idea. They may be writing down connections that they're making, questions that they have. And then they have opportunities to talk to other students to find out what they may have gathered from that article. So there's that talking part of it. And then from there, they can revisit that article on a different day, and that's when I have them pick out a different color pen or something to add to their notes. So it's layered notes, so they continuously are adding. They're adding from things that they learned, but they're adding also from things that their fellow students learn as well. And that really helps them to have good thought-out information before they go to the writing process. And then the last slide is just an example of what we're hoping they can get to, is writing good, clear sentences that they've put a lot of thought into and that they are able to convey good information from their writing.
Based on what we've done with our work together, we can build on the work of the first and second grade and third grades in the upper grades. And we build into making it more complex writing and to lower the scaffolding so kids have more responsibility for their work. Here's an example from fourth grade. We have a task, we break down the task, and that, those layered notes that Debbie was just talking about, you can see it looks a little different by the time they get to our grade, but the same process of adding on from different sources and also collaborating with other students so they can clarify their understanding prior to starting their writing. And also then working together on collaborating on their writing here. We did on a big chart paper there, and we worked through making sure that we're explaining our reasoning, using different parts, using transitions, and having a lot of evidence, not just opinion, 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 or detail, 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 how it all goes together and flows. And then our ultimate, when we get to by the fifth grade, is, oh my goodness, you see the level of the notes that these students are taking, both with support and independently. They are showing how they're analyzing different text structures to take notes. And then when they get to their final product, this great one about dogs, working dogs, what fun, right? They have the classic one-pager, which is an avid strategy. But then not only are they presenting information, but they're thinking metacognitively. They have levels of questions that they're asking as they go through and they present. And you can see what pride they've taken in their work as they've gone through this process. And this all starts with the red panda's predator and ends up with this beautiful product of what they can do and take on as they go on.
Next thing we'd like to share is about kindness. Marshall celebrated Kindness Month, and I have three students here with me coming up. We're going to explain what they did for Kindness Month. So our students are Charlotte Hunter, she is our vice president, then Vera Rohit, who is our student council president, and Samantha Lopez is our student council treasurer.
Kindness Month. Kindness Month is celebrated, is celebrated in February. Student council decided to focus, sorry, to focus on Kindness Month, to spread kindness at our school. Kindness Month started with three schools in California. The students watched a video of what Kindness Month is during student council, during a student council meeting. As a student council, the students then made posters to have the school understand Kindness Month and how Marshall students were going to spread kindness during the month of February. Sorry if that was a little scratchy.
Studying Council had kindness gram for sale, where students could buy kindness gram for themselves or other students to spread kindness on our campus. The students would have to write a kind message, and they could attach a treat that students would enjoy after school to the kindness gram. Marshall students bought over 600 kindness grams. This was a great way to spread joy and kindness to the school, school community. Students also gave each other pink mark cards when they saw other students making their musting mark and being kind.
Why is kindness so important? Kindness is important because if you're being kind to another person, then they'll want to be kind back and to other people. Marshall students will continue to show kindness to others for the rest of the year and beyond.
How are you going to show kindness to our community?
Okay, great job. All right, just quickly, Cal Wiggand is our student that Marshall is gonna recognize tonight. And Hang Mosher is our parent volunteer we're gonna recognize tonight. But before we do that, I wanted to say thank you. I would like to thank all of the Marshall staff and students and families for truly caring about each other and our school. I would like to thank, sorry, I read off script, so I'm gonna skip that. Thank you to Superintendent Amati and the board and everybody for just supporting Marshall, all the great work that we're doing. Thank you.
We're gonna do a couple of recognitions, and while we are, if you would like to take pictures, please come up. You're allowed to go anywhere you like, so you can get the perfect pic.
All right, starting us off, I'd like to invite Cal up here. The governance team, along with Marshall Elementary School, are pleased to honor Cal Wiggand as their outstanding fifth-grade student. Cal is just an all-around great student. He has a perfect combination of studious traits, as he is attentive, inquisitive, empathetic, and has a heart of gold. Cal has the unique ability to put all of those things around him at ease. He's easygoing, yet hard-working. He's definitely not satisfied with mediocrity. Cal works hard, not just to complete assignments, but to show that he has a true understanding. He wants to thoroughly know the content at a deeper level. He works hard at being a good student and demonstrating the skills of being independent, driven, and taking initiative. His mathematical thinking and reasoning is incredible. Not only can he do the math, but he can talk about it, reason about it, and teach it to his classmates. He can always be counted on to be a leader in his class. Cal is incredibly well-liked by his peers and all of the staff at Marshall. He cares about all people, young and old. That's why the entire Marshall family loves him so much. He's just a good human who is without question going to leave his mark on the world. We are so proud to honor Cal tonight as being an amazing role model for all Marshall students. We know he will continue to make us proud into middle school and beyond. The governance team, along with Marshall Elementary School, is proud to honor Cal Wiggand as an outstanding student.
The governance team, along with Marshall Elementary School, are pleased to honor Cal, me, as their outstanding fifth-grade student. I'm just an all-around great student. I have the perfect combination of studious traits.
No, you don't have to do that. But, but Cal, what we would love is, would you like to introduce who's joining you tonight? Do you have any family members?
Mom, my brother, my sister, my stepbrother, my dad, my stepmom, my half-brother, and my stepdaughter.
Thank you, Cal. Congratulations.
I would like to ask Hang Mosher to please come up here. The governance team, along with Marshall Elementary, are proud to recognize Hang Mosher. Hang has been a valued member of the Marshall Elementary community for the last seven years. Hang began her volunteering at Marshall through supporting different Marshall events, such as classroom celebrations and whole-school events. Hang then became a member of the PTA Executive Board and took on a variety of roles and responsibilities. Hang has been a member of the PTA Executive Board for the last past six years and has served as the PTA president for the past three years. And this was also, and this year was also the lead volunteer for the Walk-a-Thon, which was a fun, which was fun and a huge success. Hang has helped support not only the Marshall community, but has helped to provide support for the entire Castro Valley community. With the relationship between CV Helping Hands and Marshall, we were able, she was able to provide food boxes to Marshall families and the Castro Valley community members during the height of the pandemic. Marshall was also able to provide multiple vaccine clinics to Marshall and Castro Valley students. The governance team joins Marshall staff and the community to thank Hang for all her time and commitment to the Marshall School community. We thank you for all your dedication and support to Marshall.
Hang, would you like to share who's joining you tonight?
First, I want to thank Principal Rogers for the recognition and all of the Marshall staff who are here and our teachers. It's emotional because it's our last year at Marshall, and it's been an incredible journey. And it's incredible because of our amazing teachers. Like, as I stare around the room, I can see every single teachers that have paid a tremendous impact on my children. And I also wanted to thank my husband, Jeff Mosher, that's here. And Lauren and Jacob, who are, Jacob is actually his last year at Marshall, so we're gonna miss Marshall dearly, and Marshall will continue to be in our heart always. And thank you so much for the recognition this evening.
Principal Rogers, before we close, would you please introduce your staff that's here tonight? We'd love to say hello.
Sure. So let me look here for someone. Miss anyone. We have Ms. Devine, Ms. Schaffner, well, Ms. Brown and Ms. Green-Curryell presented with me, Ms. Penn, Ms. McCullough, Ms. Herring. And I think that is everyone. We also have some Marshall families in the house, too. But I think, I think that's it. If I miss somebody, I'm very sorry. That's unintentional.
We're gonna have board comments, so I'm gonna just go down the road, because I know we all have them.
Yeah. Just want to thank you for the great presentation and highlight those fundamental skills that you're teaching over there, like writing. It only helps learn it early on and early in your educational career because it is something that you're gonna use for, you know, the foreseeable future. And the notes look great. If I'm being honest, some of them better than mine, so you're doing great work over there. Staying, thanks to the student council members for organizing those kindness grams and posters and whatnot. It's great to see that, you know, you really have a dedication to spreading kindness over at your school, and that's something we'd love to see shared at the middle and high school level as well. Also to Cal, you seem like a great kid, great student. And, you know, I always say whenever I'm reading through these descriptions of how you're like on campus, that if the high schoolers over at CVHS had you as a role model, it'd be a, it'd be a very different place, to say the least. So you're, you're a great kid, and keep doing what you're doing. And also our school volunteer, you know, I, I still remember the moms and dads who volunteered when, when I was in elementary school. And so your impact is real, and it really does impact our, our students. And it's something that will be remembered for long after you leave. So thank you very much for all your work, and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Trustee Raymond.
Hey, good evening. So I, I suppose it's, clearly you've got a great community at Marshall. To see so many people turn out for a board meeting on a Wednesday night after a long school day and work day. Just thank you to all of you for coming and for supporting your own community so, so vibrantly. I love the writing projects. I was able to read a little bit of it while I loved the writing projects. I was able to read a little bit of it while listening to the presentation as well. And I learned, I did not know snow leopards were a predator of a red panda. So I learned something tonight and it's always fun to see what kids are writing. You know, it's just super fun. And, and then finally, I'll just say that to Hang Mosher, I last year said goodbye to Vanoy after like 10 years of being a parent there and it's hard. So that, you know, you'll, I'm sure find a place at one of our lovely middle schools as well. So yeah, it's, it's, it's a passage. So anyway, thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you, Trustee Raymond. Trustee Howard.
Yeah, thanks for the report. We enjoyed it for sure. And I have to say, writing is an activity that's near and dear to my heart. And I'm really pleased to see that you're working hard on that. I think it's a very rewarding thing. Congratulations to Cal and Hang. Thanks for all of the work that you've done over there. Good luck in your future endeavors. And to the three students who are up, I will say thanks for your, your suggestion. I'll try to remember to be kind tomorrow in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Howard. Trustee Adams.
So Marshall School is my home school. It's where my children went to, to school because I live in that community. And just want to say also, you might see me sometimes at the Marshall Fields with my dog and playing disc or playing ball, right? Because it's a, a walk there, a nice walk to Marshall School. I want to thank really Cal and Hang. Both of you are, you know, really doing your best really for the community, for yourself and for the community. It'll be really good to be seeing Cal grow up into middle school and high school. And I'm sure we'll see him again. And also to Hang, you know, to our middle schools soon. I want to, I really think that the, I like the philosophical chairs idea. That seems really good. And just the way that you're teaching writing, starting at very young grades with the scaffolding and whatnot, and then building up just really looks marvelous. And what wonderful educational value writing has for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Adams. Vice President Kuziak.
Hi there. I can assure you that Trustee Howard is kind. He's not just tomorrow. You're a very kind person. I need to practice that. I wanted to just thank you all for this presentation. I was really moved about the writing component. Like Trustee Howard, like writing to me is a really important skill and being fluent and be at a young age to understand structure. And to all the kids out there doing this work, I know it might seem very grueling, but it builds up to something really important and it's being able to tell your own story. And I remember when I got to college after a very, you know, intense experience learning how to write in high school, how that really served me. So this is a building block for all of you and it's a wonderful skill to have. So I was just, that was just great to hear about that. I, it absolutely resonates with me about trying to be kind. Very close to me, my mom wouldn't approve. So thank you for having that as part of your spirit at, at Marshall. Cal, I think I want to give you a supplemental award for being like the happiest recipient of the student award at the school board meeting since I started on the school board. Your, your smile is absolutely amazing. You seem like you're going places. And if you would like to balance the school board budget, you seem to have some exceptional math skills. So we can have you help out with that. And Hang, I just, having been at Chabot and, you know, Trustee Raymond talked about, you know, Vanoy, our elementary school communities truly are the hearts of our neighborhoods and it really brings us together. And that's, I think, what's really special about our Castro Valley and High School District. And it was so clear during the pandemic that the Mustang community stepped up. Y'all stepped up. You were helping your community with those food boxes. You're helping with, with those vaccine clinics. And please be proud of your part in making that happen. And I just want to thank you for all that you do and go Stangs. Or what, what did we say? What's our, do we have a cheer? Go Stangs.
Thank you, Mark. Yeah, dream big, work hard, be strong, go Mustangs.
That.
Thank you, Vice President Kuziak. Superintendent Amadi.
Yeah, I just want to make a few comments about Avid is an amazing program. But it works best when there's actually school-wide, right? And we were very, very fortunate that when we had Ms. Rogers actually go from high school, she had expertise in Avid and that was like a perfect match. The teachers at Marshall have done an amazing job. In fact, I always take pictures when I go to school of student work so I can post. And I just remember every time I've been at, at Marshall, I've taken pictures. And sometimes it's just, I go back to them and I go, oh my gosh, that was so adorable, so great. So I can see as you walk through, you can see writing is a focus for, for your school. And teachers are doing a phenomenal job actually doing Avid in the way it should be done. But what I love about what you heard today is there are things that you learn with any program, but you adapt. You know better than anybody else. You can get a book, you can get a manual, but as a teacher, you have the expertise and you know you love this work and you know how to adapt it to make it the best. So I want to, I want to thank you for that. As far as Cal, I think you're absolutely right. Trustee Kuziak was right. You just make people happy. When I was reading about you this morning, because I read all of the things that we do at the board meeting, I said, I gotta see who this kid is. Because the way it was, they were describing you just made me want to meet you in person. Because I've been to, so that's, just keep it up. You're amazing. And I, I have to say, Ms. Mosher has been just a gift. When we were going through COVID, there were so many times that we hit roadblocks with vaccination clinics, with just things we needed through the health department or the county, and she was critical. She knows people, she has connections, and she has a big heart. So I want to thank you for everything you've done for not just Marshall, but for the entire community. And last but not least, I do want to thank Ms. Rogers because she is an absolutely amazing principal who, not only at Marshall, but we learn a lot from her with all of the other things that she does to support the entire school district. So thank you.
Thank you. I won't repeat everything because most things have been said, but I want to thank the Marshall community for coming out tonight and thank you, Principal Rogers. We will move on to Student Board Member Report. Student Board Member Hanson.
Thank you. It's a little bit longer today because it's been our first board meeting in a while. So I'll go ahead and get started. Stanton Science Night happened yesterday. It was a night aimed to engage families together in fun science experiment, experience, experiences. The Science Olympiad Program, a program that has over 100 C V U S D students from Creekside Canyon and the high school participated in invitational tournaments from Cupertino to Los Angeles with second and third place overall finishes for C V H S in Creekside. All three schools advanced to the Northern California State Tournament. Multiple medals were awarded. Creekside got 26. Canyon earned 20 and C V H S took 40 across the 23 different event categories. Schools around the district are celebrating Women's History Month by reading books by female authors, researching prominent women in history, interviewing female family members and more. The Vanoy Parents Club is hosting a V P C party, complete with an evening of board games, appetizers, desserts, drinks, and a chance to leave the kids at home on Saturday, March 18th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Adobe Art Gallery. The P A C Proctor Arts Collaborative is back and going strong after a two-year hiatus. PAC is a P T A sponsored program that brings art and music into classrooms and is completely parent-run. During a typical lesson, students learn some background information on a famous artist and then create something of their own in the artist's style. They also learn about music from the artist's region and listen to it while they create. Proctor's production of Seussical Kids is going to be taking place on April 15th and 16th. Come and support Proctor's production. The third through fifth graders will be performing in the Seussical, a 30-minute musical featuring classic Dr. Seuss characters, Horton the Elephant, The Cat in the Hat, and more. And there's also a few students from the high school theater program who are acting as mentors with that. So it's, it's a district-wide thing. C V E has a Super Mario Bros. themed Walkathon volunteer event on March 17th. C V E also recently had their Candy Land Dance. Chabot is hosting an online auction where parents are encouraged to come bid on some great items put together by the Chabot community. The auction is being hosted on their pos shop and began yesterday. Chabot also had a Mad Science Assembly during school today. Every Chabot student had the chance to experience an amazing presentation put on by Mad Science Fire and Ice. Chabot's Spring Musical Treasure, Treasure Island is opening soon. This free program is open to the community and it's going to, little typo there. Fourth and fifth grade students are going to be performing in it and it returns to the stage after a three-year hiatus. All performances begin at 7:00 p.m. and end at approximately 8:00. Performance dates are April 17th, 19th, 21st, 24th, 26th, 27th, and the 28th. Okay, schools around the district are participating in this year's March Mammal Competition, a competition modeled after March Madness, but with mammals. D S L A also met last Tuesday. We discussed topics like good qualities we see in teachers, school lunch, and school cleanliness. Okay, moving on to the high school. Winter's sports have officially concluded. Multiple teams advanced beyond seasonal play. Girls wrestling won their league. Boys wrestling came in second place in their league. Girls soccer advanced to the first round of N C S playoffs. Boys soccer advanced to the second round of N C S playoffs. And girls basketball advanced to the first round of N C S playoffs. The end of March concludes our season of service, period of peace. This is a 10-week program where our clubs host different events on campus to raise awareness about topics that are important to them. Our clubs have hosted events on cultivating and connecting community, global awareness, personal health, expanding horizons, and plan to host events surrounding mental health. Our annual ladies' flag football game is taking place early April. The freshman junior team is taking off the, taking on the sophomore senior team. There will also be performances from the Spirit Boys as well. Six high school students, including myself, had a chance to read books to kindergarten, first and second graders at Marshall as a part of the Proctor, as a part of the Proctor Safe Routes to School Presentation for the February 2023. We read popular books about transportation like Don't Let the Pigeon Drive the Bus. The C V H S Drama Program Production of Mean Girls is opening next Friday. They will be having performances on March 17th, 18th, 19th, the 24th, 25th, and the 26th. I will be playing the Guitar in the Pit Orchestra in case any of my fans out there are wondering. The College and Career Center along with C V V A and Redwood High School is hosting a March Into Your Future Workshop as we speak right now. Parents and students alike have the opportunity to learn about the UC system, state school system, early college credit, and more. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Student Board Member Hanson. We will move on to the Superintendent's Report. Superintendent Amadi.
Just a few things. Last Saturday, we had a symposium called the California Association of Asian American and Pacific Islander in Education. We had Assembly Member Alex Lee actually as a keynote. We had lots of workshop. It was really, really wonderful. This was the first year this group has actually formed statewide, so they came from all over. Our Professional Development Day is March 10th. And we're really excited because it is, all of us are involved, classified, certified, everyone will be here all day. We have a job fair on the 25th at Castro Valley High School from 9:00 to 11:00. If you're looking for jobs, please check us out. We're very excited to have it here. Just a couple of things about Proposition 28th, which is actually the Music and Art and Music Money, the proposition that passed. We had our first meeting and we'll have our second meeting coming up. I really loved sitting around with our teachers and the art and music and theater teachers in the district, K-12, and we talked about the, some of the things that have come up is really like a teacher on assignment that is an expert in kind of putting a lot of these things together. There was a lot of call for elementary art and music to expand that as well as parity of the program between the two middle schools and then there's high school. So there's more conversation to be had, but I really want to thank our teachers and staff who, who attended and kind of just shared. Opportunities for parents. These are all on social media and you should have access to them. But we do have Black Minds Matter coming up. And that actually starts March 13th with the first session. There are a couple of really great workshops also from our adult school. This is for really, like one is called Navigating Boyhood, How to Raise Kids Calm Cooperative Sons. So this is just, just a couple of workshops. I also wanted to let everyone know that there is a book study that they're putting together at adult school that's open to the entire community that it's called Design for Belonging, a book study. And of course, we have a virtual community event on compassionate dialogues that I invite everybody to on March 30th from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. As you also heard, this is today is, this month is the National Women's History Month. These months, sometimes we get asked, like, why do we have these months? So just a reminder for, for everybody, these months are dedicated to various causes because historically, these groups have faced injustice impacting their livelihood. They're to highlight not only the struggles of a group, of a historically marginalized group, but also to talk about how we co-create what can happen next and talk about their contributions. For example, we have, you know, the Women's History Month, LGBTQ, African-American Month, Hispanic Heritage Month. It's really important to know why we have these. So following the resolution that the, the governing board actually passes, each time we actually put materials together for our schools to use, our teachers are embedding lessons, as you heard from our student board member. So it's happening all month long. So, and today is International Women's Day. In 1857, the place was New York. Female textile workers marched to protest inequality for women and unsafe working conditions. As the year progressed, more marches and protests grew as women expand the fight to include child labor, sweatshops-like conditions, and women's suffrage.
We will now take a five-minute break. So if you need to get home and get dinner or homework, you may now leave, but we have an exciting agenda afterwards. We're, we're going to learn about the Vasquez Health Center and Castro Valley High School, a Puente project, our second interim report on our financials. Where did Cal go? And we're going to talk about our Measure G Bond Oversight Committee and look at the personnel report. So, you know, if you want to stay, you're more than welcome. Otherwise, we understand. And we'll be back at 5 till. Employees Association and Castro Valley Teachers Association reports. Do we have representatives on the line? Welcome, CSEA. Welcome, Kathy.
Thank you. Sorry. Hi, my name's Kathy Vandevere and I am the current treasurer of our union. And I'm also have been a paraprofessional at Canyon for the past twelve years. I want to thank Superintendent Amadi and the board for the continued support for CSEA, Chapter Fifty-two, and our classified staff. We are currently working with our chapter to discuss negotiations. We have had many great meetings with site admin and HR. Excuse me. Our union is growing and we're very excited to announce we have over three hundred active members as of now. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak and once again, we appreciate your support of Chapter Fifty-two and our members. This concludes our brief update. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any public comments for items not on the agenda? We will move to item ten, the Consent Agenda.
I move that we adopt the Consent Agenda.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Student Board Member Hanson.
Yes.
Trusty Raymond.
Yes.
Trusty Howard.
Yes.
Trusty Adams.
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak.
It's President Whitaker.
And I will vote yes. The motion passes six zero. We do have a request and just want to make sure it's okay with the board. We have our Puente Project presentation here and all of our kids are here with us. So is it okay if we swap? I see a raise of hands. If that's okay if we swap our items? Great. All right, well, welcome. We have a great update on the Puente Project at Castro Valley High School. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much, School Board, for having us. We're from the Puente Project at Castro Valley High School and we're very excited to talk to you guys about what's going on. So we'll do some introductions. So part of our Puente team, my name is Isabella Sanval and I've been the Puente counselor for six years at Castro Valley High School. We also have Mr. Dennis, who is our Puente English teacher. He was unable to join us this year. We also have our administrator, Stacy Southern. We also have some of our students.
All right, I am Colin Dennis and I'm a junior at Castro Valley High School.
Hi, I'm Alexa P. Seal and I'm a junior at Castro Valley High School.
Hello, my name is Xander and I'm a junior at Castro Valley High School.
Hello, my name's Gifty Barasso and I'm a senior at Castro Valley High School.
Hi, my name is Lauren Anguiano and I have a senior at Castro Valley High School.
My name is Amalia Sandoval and I have a junior and a freshman at Castro Valley.
Thank you for having us all here. So let's give a little bit of a historical context. Which is a very exciting time for us. We actually, our Puente team just got back from the Professional Development statewide PD that they had last week. And it was amazing. It was fun. It was fabulous. We're re-energized and ready to go. And so like I said, they're celebrating forty years, so Puente has been around. It started locally here at Chabot College and it started off with an English teacher and a counselor. And their goal was to help students pass an English class that was a gatekeeper for allowing students to move forward in the community college and go to a four-year college. So thanks to them, they were able to establish this great program that we have brought here to Castro Valley High School. Since then, it has grown and expanded to middle schools, high schools, and community colleges. It's also, we also have some cohorts in Texas and also Washington. They're also gonna be bringing on about twelve more high schools and middle schools. So there's a lot of excitement in the air. And it has been at Castro Valley High School since twenty thirteen.
So the Puente Project's mission is to increase the number of students who enroll in four-year colleges and universities who are able to earn degrees and actually return back to the communities from which they originated as leaders and mentors for future generations. Puente's nationally recognized training programs prepare high school students and community college faculty for student success through the innovative teaching programs, counselors, and mentoring that we have established.
Here is our Castro Valley High Puente Project Mission Statement. The mission of the Castro Valley High Puente Project is to build a familia of learners whose diverse home cultures are valued by using a strength-based approach and develop leadership and mentorship skills of puenteistas while preparing them to enroll in and complete four-year college degree programs.
So this is a picture of some of our puenteistas at a community event. Our Puente is for students who would be in the first in their family to attend college. They like to read literature by diverse authors, so this is part of the built-in curriculum. They like the additional support to help prepare for college, so that's embedded within the curriculum. So everything has a college-going aspect to it within the curriculum. They like to participate in community service, leadership. So again, it has that community-building aspect to it because we expect students to come back and give to the community and enrich it. Puente is open to all students, so although there is this college-going aspect to it and there is a strong Latina ChiConex thread that goes through it, it is different than avid with the college-going aspect because there is that cultural component, but it is still open for all. And so our puente, puenteestas students are diverse. We have a leadership component in it. We have athletes that participate in it. We have artists, club members, students with a wide range of academic skills. It really is open for all and we do see that diverse selection of students who apply and are admitted every year.
So with that being said, now that you have a little bit of an idea of what our program is about and the essence of it, our program at Castro Valley High School is a little unique. So every Puente Project program is a little bit different. So ours, it's a four-year program. So in order for students to be able to be in the program, they do have to apply. And when they apply, we follow up and do an interview with the student and the parent. And that gives us the opportunity to get to know them, get to know their family, and they also can get to know us so that we already start to make those connections before they get started at our school. And the way that we do recruitment is that we present with the special programs and pathways at the middle school. We present at eighth-grade family night. And we also had a special eighth-grade information night this year, which was a lot of fun because we got to present, meet families, they interviewed, and filled out the application. So it was a lot of fun. And so our program, we have our English classes that are for ninth and tenth grade. There's also Puente Seminar for upperclassmen, for our seniors and juniors. And also, a big component is that they have the same counselor all four years, so we get to build those connections until they graduate and then some. And we have a Puente Club that is open for all, so anybody on campus can join it and be part of it. And our other, like, big connection is family engagement. We want our parents to be involved and be connected with their students and with us throughout all of high school.
So currently, our puenteestas at CVHS consist of a ninth-grade cohort of twenty-three puenteestas, a tenth-grade cohort of twenty puenteestas, an eleventh-grade cohort of twenty-six puenteestas, a twelfth-grade cohort of twenty-three puenteestas, and twenty-five additional, which sometimes can overlap, of the Puente Club members. We have had six graduating classes, so six successful cohorts that have gone on to successful college and careers. And the twenty twenty-three graduating class will be our seventh successful cohort. So we'll have some celebration coming up.
So a little bit more to elaborate on our Puente team. So as a Puente counselor, as I mentioned, I worked with families and students for all four years. I also get to switch my hat and be able to do Puente Seminar where I teach students a variety of things to get them prepared for the application process, for their journey to transition on to college and higher-level education. I also monitor their progress. We do college and career exploration and I'm able to connect with families in different ways, whether that's events, meetings, or just like pick up the phone and see how you're doing, right? And then for our Puente English teacher, as I mentioned, he's able to be, Mr. Dennis is able to be with his students for two years. And when he's able to do that, he's able to build trust, he's able to put, to fill, to build community and familia with them. He's also able to help them transition through summer because he's with them for two years and he's able to assess where their skills are. So it's a great way for him to be connected. And then we kind of transitioned since we worked together as the students come to me for Puente Seminar for twelfth and eleventh, for eleventh and twelfth grade.
In the Puente Project, it consists of multiple cultural components. In both ninth and tenth grade year, we are put in a literature class with Mr. Dennis, as stated by Ms. Sandoval. And the literature class focuses on the culture, the cultural aspect of literature as well as going to multiple places, which include college campuses, events, as well as a museum visit seen in the Soul Cow trip. And it helps students further engage in their studies as well as their own background.
So for our ninth and tenth graders, we have the Puente English class. It exposes students to a combination of Latino and ChiConex authors and multicultural authors. The classes are writing-focused and builds student writing skills for the first years of high school. And it's really important for that so that we can help develop it, especially for their junior and senior year. Explores leadership and community service also with their students.
One event that our Puente ninth graders go to is the Puente Ninth Grade Leadership Conference. This year, parents joined them at UC Davis where we got to listen to an amazing keynote speaker, the grandson of Cesar Chavez. And students could go to workshops. I went to one about engineering and then also one about all the great UCs and CSUs we have in the state. And I overall had a lot of fun.
Similar to the ninth-grade conference, there is Puente Day for tenth and eleventh graders. Our trip consisted of going to CSU Sacramento State. And this trip really helps students engage in fun activities for understanding college and also understanding the daily life of what it's like to be in a higher education. In this trip, we did a bunch of events to help further expand our knowledge, one of them being seeing a bunch of resources and fairs as well as clubs. And we also got a tour of the campus, which helps students really get a good feel of what life is like in college.
And then to talk a little more in detail about the Puente Seminar. So it's for juniors and seniors. In the seniors, I meet with So it's for juniors and seniors. In the seniors, I meet with them in the fall. It's only one day a week on Wednesdays. And so, because sometimes zero periods can be too much, but one day a week, it's doable. And at that time, for the seniors, we're actually applying. We are able to have them do their personal insight questions, and we get to review them and look over them. In addition to that, we start to talk about FASFA. We're applying for different scholarships. And then talk about the transition to what to expect. Second semester, like, you're going to be doing acceptances. You're going to have to look at your financial award letters and how to make those decisions. So really having them prepared so that we have a warm handoff to the next phase of what's to come with higher education. And then for juniors, I currently have them now. And so we do career and college exploration. So I use different tools to help them explore that and see what are different type of matches that come up for careers. Sometimes students will be surprised, wow, it's spot-on, or I hadn't thought of this career. So it's really nice because it just gets that awareness a little more. And then we do financial literacy and digital footprint. So right now, we're in our financial literacy unit. We discussed credit scores, credit cards, and banking. So that has been a lot of fun and eye-opening for some students. And also, we start to look into the variety of colleges and scholarships that are available to them so that they'll be prepared once they get to their senior year.
This year, we took a trip down to SoCal, we being the juniors and seniors. We had, we visited seven different colleges, different college campuses. And then we also went to the Cheech, which is Riverside Art Museum. I liked all the art there. It was very surreal. There were different paintings where if you moved, the painting would change. And it was just overall very fun.
So one aspect for our seniors is that in working with the Puente Project, they've connected with us with a program called the Poderoso Project. So that consists of staff at Cal and students from Cal. We're there helping seniors that are in the Puente program to help them with the college application process and student panel. They've been helped, they helped them with the UC Insight Questions and offered workshops. They also offered one-on-one appointments to go over their application and personal insight question review because we really want our students to aim to apply to a UC for your college and get that support. So with their resource with Puente, they were able to get us connected with the Poderoso Program. So it was a really great collaboration. We had their assistance last year and this year, and hoping that that's a continued collaboration that we'll have moving forward.
And so part of our graduation and post-high school goals, being a part of Puente for all four years, it's a mark of pride. So some of our, you can see they have their Puente stalls preparing for graduation. It is, we call them cohorts, but really it's familia, you know. And so graduating together is something that we build for all four years. And so increasing that graduation rate, it's, you know, if one struggles, you pick your family up, you don't leave them behind. And so that's something that we build with this cohort model. And so all puentistas, the goal is to meet those A through G requirements. We use that with the counseling model. Teachers check in. Kids can check in with each other, but really the goal is for students to attend four-year colleges. UC, CSU, private school, what works best for them? And out-of-state community college with transfer to four years, so maybe there's a stop first. And that's okay because what suits that student best. But the goal is always out of Puente to be at a four-year college. And so when we do these college fairs like we spoke of, they are modeled to make sure that there is always that cultural component. So it's not that a college fair just happens to have a booth for students that has a culture, but it's all strategically modeled for that culture component to be embedded. And so certain colleges actually now have Puente Clubs. And so it's stretching out to include that next phase. And so that's really something that we're looking forward to as well. So students can continue their journey on and have that familia experience at that next stage of their journey as well.
So as a component of the Puente program, we also have the Puente Club, which I'm the president of. So we plan cultural events on campus. Like before, we have our photos of our Dia de los Muertos event that we host with Deco Club and Latinos Unidos and the World Teachers. We have leadership opportunities where people can come to events like this to represent Puente program. And we have community service so that they can get hours and can look better on their resumes and get better on their leadership and community service skills. We host fundraisers and are in the process of doing our Sees Candy fundraiser. And we also have our Instagram where we post updates, CBHS Puente.
So now we'll just have our puentistas just give one comment of their experience of Puente.
With my experience in Puente, something I learned is that Puente helps set a foundation to build a community within our peers. Being in a class with the same people for four years really helps establish a bunch of relationships within ourselves. As stated earlier, we're like familia. We help each other back up whenever times get rough. And by the end of graduation, we all want one thing, which is to graduate into a higher level education. As well as the teachers as well, Ms. Sandoval, Mr. Dennis, having them there to guide our backs really helps the students. And I couldn't ask for any more help. I'm really grateful for this program. I'm really grateful for the teachers. I'm really grateful for Ms. Sandoval. And yeah.
Another great thing about the Puente program is the college trips we get to go on. I've gone to many colleges with the Puente program. And overall, I've just found going to the campuses both inspiring and motivating. You see all these amazing schools and you're just like, I want to get in there in the future. And it just brings you to a better understanding of where you want to be in the future. Without Puente, I wouldn't have this, I wouldn't have had the opportunity to go to this many colleges. And overall, I feel like I'd be in a very different position.
I really admire the English portion of it. I think literature is very important for all people to learn. And seeing my culture reflected in the books that I read is really important so that I can gain more sense of my own cultural understanding, but also about other parts of the world also that I've never learned about.
One thing that really motivated me to join Puente was how hands-on it was, especially with the counselor and Mr. Dennis. Coming from an immigrant household, I really didn't have anyone to rely on to give me these resources and opportunities, like scholarships, how to apply for financial aid, how to apply to the UCs, Cal States, and all of these. And it was very informative and it just gave me all these opportunities. I really appreciated.
Thank you. So as I mentioned earlier, another piece is parent engagement and family events. So things that we host to keep our families connected are our Noche de Familia. That is, like, that's how we kick off our year. We have a Noche de Familia. We do a ninth-grade parent orientation and then welcome families with the celebration of Noche de Familia with other parents and students, where we have food and games and music. We also have our Dia de los Muertos celebration. I also, we hold Puente parent meetings where we're able to talk about academics, any upcoming events, enrichment opportunities for their students and for parents. So it's a good way. And we also give parents the opportunities to let us know, what is something that you would like on the agenda? Because it's a presentation for them, right? And then we end off our year with our end-of-the-year celebration. I remember seeing Mr. Howard come join us one year, and that was a lot of fun, where we give recognition to our classes. We have speakers, students, parents, and sometimes outside speakers, and present our seniors with our presentation of their graduation stalls. And now we'll hear a little bit about our parents and their experience.
So I have a junior, Alexa's my daughter, and also a freshman, Mateo. And the reason I wanted them to join was because of really immersing them in their culture, being able to expose them more to their culture. Because I was born and raised in Washington State, and we didn't have a lot of that available. We definitely didn't have Puente or anything like that. So myself and my siblings came from, farmworkers, immigrants that came from Mexico. So they couldn't help us. They had zero education. And this would have been really helpful to me and my siblings to get us to college. And we have four university graduates, three engineers and teachers. So we made it, but it was, you know, we had to do it on our own. This is invaluable, you know, being able. I think the other part is, you know, developing that pride in your culture. I felt like I had that struggle myself, and I didn't want my kids to have that. And I think this is definitely helping Herb and him build their leadership skills, build their pride in their culture, feel more confident that they can get to college. And because there's a lot of people that have gone before them, and they see, you know, the puentistas, they see the support that we give them, they see all of these colleges, as you've heard, the events that they have, they see the parents participating and having pride in them when they present and they have their events. And the community really comes together at these events, and I've seen that. And I think it really helps the community see the Latinos in a different light as well. Oh, they are leaders. They can go to college. You know, they do, they are leaders. They can become engineers. You know, I'm an engineer. It's been a struggle being a Latina, so I know the struggle in a male-dominated environment. So this is only going to help my daughter and my son, and it has already. I'm a single mother, so, and I'm from Washington State. I don't know how California works. And twenty-four years ago, college is very different, and application process is totally different from what it used to be. So I'm so thankful that they have all these seminars, that they're giving, like, I went to the UC Davis visit. They had parent seminar. You could ask any question. They went over, you know, the thousands of schools they have in California and how competitive they are. So they let us ask all the questions we needed, and, you know, there's so much support. And I feel so much more comfortable that they do have that and that, you know, they're going to help them with the application process. And I don't have to do it all. I don't have to help her all by myself. So that's really helpful. But yeah, I definitely, the Dia de los Muertos event was, I've attended every time they've had it. And it's really amazing and people really enjoy that. But yeah, overall, so I also really enjoyed Cesar Chavez's grandson speaking at the UC Davis because my parents are farmworkers. And I remember growing up, we marched in Washington State for the Farm Workers Union with my parents to fight for it. So I got to talk to him and I got to take a picture with him. And he told me about his experience in Washington State. So I think that also, you know, sometimes you kind of feel ashamed of where you come from, but that brings you pride when you see that, you know, what we've developed into and how we've overcome those struggles and how we still continue to fight. And they still continue to help people that are the farmworkers and that type of thing. And, you know, puentistas, they take that pride. They're not ashamed anymore, right? We're not ashamed. We have pride in our culture, and that's what I really enjoy about this program. Thank you.
Hello again. Again, my name is Lorena Angiano. And I think I could talk about Puente for the entire night. We have a very long history with Puente in my family. My husband was actually a member of the second graduating cohort of the Puente program and its history at Chabot College. That led him to UC Berkeley, and they had opened their offices there when the founders were going to expand statewide. And so that, he worked there while we were in undergrad, and that helped put him through undergrad. And then fast forward, you know, we have three kids. And so I've had three kids go through the Puente program at Castro Valley, a son, a daughter, and a nephew who we helped raise. And it has been very valuable for all of them for many, many reasons. Our first son who went through was able to be co-president of the club, and so it helped him practice his leadership skills, get up and need to help shepherd his students towards decisions on what the club was going to do and so forth. And it was, it was good for him to have that practice. And one of the rewarding things was that although I am the, you know, like my predecessor, I am also a child of migrant farmworkers and first generation. My husband is also first generation. And although we've been to college, went to help lead, you know, my husband and to Cal. And I went to Cal as well, and it led him to graduate school at Harvard Business School. So we've done well. But our numbers are still not that great in higher learning. And so I find that my children, although we do well for ourselves educationally, they still have this burden of imposter syndrome when they get there. And so my son got to Cal and he felt imposter syndrome. But what was so rewarding is we went to Cal Day, the welcome day, and they had all the student clubs and immediately had his Puente shirt on. And immediately, the Puente Club members from UC Berkeley came and welcomed him, exchanged phone numbers and so forth. So it's a powerful network that's being built. For my nephew, he would be first-generation college student without the help of Ms. Sandoval and his English teachers and the fact that Puente builds a community within such a large high school. He would not have made it. He would not have made it to a four-year because he didn't have the confidence. And they built the confidence for him and also had tight communication with me and with my husband, and continue to with my daughter, who's now a senior. I can pick up the phone, I can email, and I will have a response that day. I know that the person I'm calling knows exactly who I am, knows exactly who my child is. And in such a large high school, that's hard to say with, you know, just a larger, broader community. So that's been so invaluable. So my nephew's going to graduate in May with his four-year degree and is going to move on to a teaching credential. So we're very, very proud of him. He'll be the first in his family. If you got any internships. And my daughter's a senior. And this year in particular, the visit to the museum on the SoCal trip, she called me. And she was just beside herself with how powerful the museum had been as a cultural connection. Seeing all the art from Latino artists and Chicano artists was so powerful in such a way that I would have never imagined. And she, it immediately sent her from, I'm going to go the Chabot route to, no, I want to go straight to four-year. So as soon as she came back from that trip, she worked with Ms. Sandoval, and we all built a plan and to figure out how to do that. So now we're just waiting for a response from the right school. I'm so happy to say that she's on her way to, and it's been very helpful. As she struggled through COVID, as many people did, to have, you know, the help from this team, Mr. Dennis as well, as an amazing teacher and guide in the program. So very happy to have Puente here and hope that it garners your support forevermore. Thank you.
So as you can see, our program thrives off of our parents and our students. And we're here because we want to support them. We want to get them through high school and celebrate their achievements. So just a couple of highlights that we have. Gifty, who just presented, she received the recognition for our Puente statewide academic and leadership award. And so that was from her academics, her extracurriculars, and her dedication to the community. We also have one of our students, Eugenie Basili, who is a senior. And she this year is the ROP ambassador for the medical careers and helped present when we were talking about ROP presentations. And then we had signings for athletes. We had Isabella Tavares, who was signed for UTEP, so University of Texas, for being a pitcher for softball. And then we had a graduate from last year that this year got And then we had a graduate from last year that this year got signed on, Angel Fernandez for San Jose State University for soccer.
So we're going to come with numbers. We're going to come with the receipts, right? So this is not just a cross, like a simple cross-section. We did not handpick these students because, but this is a representative of what Puente does. So I will explain this beautiful chart in front of you. So what we're going to look at is the green and yellow combined, because that is UC and CSU. And so those are four-year schools. We're not going to take into account the blue. Those are private and out-of-state. But because private schools might include two-year trade schools, we're not going to include those in the number, because the data might be skewed. So we're going to look at yellow and green. So when we're doing, and this is for the year of 2021, for our graduating class, for college-going rates of all high school, CBHS high school students. So for all four-year rates, again, that's yellow and green. CBHS had a rate of 32% attending four-year UC and CSU for all CBHS high school graduates, 32%. That's, that's not bad. That's a pretty good rate. For our Latinx population, we had a rate of 21%, so slightly lower. We want to have a comparable rate for all students. For Puente, when you look at those rates combined, 51%. That is what our program does. Puenteestas went to UCs and CSUs at a rate of 51%. That's more than double the Latinx population rate of college-going for UC and CSUs. And it outmarked the CBHS rate. So that is a success for that, for our program. That is a success that our kids achieved. It's not really us. They put in that work. So how did they do it? So Puente's mission is achieved by kids enrolling in four-year college and universities. It's achieved through the students. It's not time for us to take the accolades. They need to take it. For achieving and maintaining high GPAs, because that's how they reach admission, and through working through the rigorous coursework that is assigned to them. So we put up the books earlier. They read that material. They look at that literature. They write those essays. They write the college application essays, and they get in at a rate of 51%.
So just a couple of additional highlights to talk on. Just so you know, since Mr. Dennis and I have been there, we've taken to students to over 22 college campus tours. We also, last year, at the end of last year, we received an equity grant through Puente for $10,000, which we've been able to use for a variety of different events for our students. We've also widened the collaboration with clubs on campus and even outside. So we've been able to connect with local Puente projects close to us, so like Tennis and High School, James Logan, and the statewide, and also continued collaboration with our Boletos program.
So when looking forward, it's not enough. I mean, yes, it's enough. We are happy. But we always want more, because we're greedy. But we always want more for our kids. That's what we are as educators, as parents. We want more. So we hope to increase the cohort size. We want to welcome more children into the Puente familia. So we will interview and accept more. If we can build more classes, we will. We want to explore Puente in the middle schools so that we can bridge that and have students start thinking about college at an earlier level and see themselves reflected in that curriculum at the middle school level, and build that excitement and that love. We also are going to be looking at Puente ethnic studies and see what they have to offer, because that's being rolled out as a pilot, so we'll be looking into that. So there's lots of exciting things coming out of the Puente project that we are going to be digging into. And so I want to just thank our familia here for coming in and joining us today. And in closing, I'm just going to read, not my own words, but read out by Luis Valdez from Pensamiento Serpentino in La Cabe. Tu eres mi otro yo. You are my other me. Si te hago daño a ti, if I do harm to you, me hago daño a mí mismo, I do harm to myself. Si te amo y respeto, if I love and respect you, me amo y respeto yo, I love and respect myself. Thank you.
I know we're going to have more questions and comments, but I just wanted to ask. First, I want to thank our parents for sharing your stories. Really appreciate you coming and sharing what you've been through. It means a lot, and we really appreciate it. But I have a question. I know you shared a little bit about your experiences of, you know, what it's been like for you. But what, your favorite thing, like what is the most valuable insight that you've gleaned going through the program? And do you know maybe where you want to go to school?
With the Puente project, I learned more about myself, as well as my peers, as well as my future. And I figured out, well, coming into high school, I had no clue of where I was going to end up. I wasn't a good student in middle school. I'm going to be honest. But the high school, the Puente project, has really helped me maintain a high GPA, as well as figuring out what I want to do in the future. I learned more from Puente than anything I've learned from any other class or anything. And especially with the help of Ms. Sandoval with the Puente seminar, learning about credit, learning about banking. I didn't know what, what any of that was. But now I'm really looking into the future, and I feel like I'm more comfortable in moving on in life, as well as being able to be more independent when I graduate from high school. And I do have a variety of colleges. Whenever we go on a college tour, Mr. Dennis always tells us, keep this list of colleges that, you know, you want to go to, so you can look at when you're applying. And I have a, I have a pretty strong set of colleges that I really am interested in. And I do have a pretty strong idea of where I want to be in the future, which is something I didn't have without Puente, as well as Ms. Sandoval really guiding me, as, as well as Mr. Dennis really putting ideas, and then really finding out my own, my own identity.
Thank you.
I guess I'll go next. Something, probably one of the most influential parts of the Puente program on my life is probably the, like, community built in. So I've always been a bit of a timid person. Back in middle school, I rarely talked. I was like, always the one in the back, silent. But getting to, like, talk to more of my peers in the Puente program really helped me outreach more and, like, take more opportunities. And it has really helped me to sort of see how I like, how I like helping people all around, different, like, yeah. Overall, I definitely would have taken less leadership roles and a lot less opportunities than I would have now. And I think that's probably a huge unspoken, like, unspoken advantage that the Puente program brings to everyone who joins it.
So I really wanted to see this class, especially like, not only for the literature, but I just realized when I got into the class, I saw people like me. Like, I didn't see that many people like me in most of my classes. And I, I got to connect with everyone on like, every little thing about our classes, about our teachers. I felt more able to speak to other people, especially in my class, and we were able to collaborate on stuff more. And I learned more about leadership in that class, because you learn to, to talk about what you want in life, especially in that class. Like, what do you want to do when you're, like, older? And Ms. Sandoval always, like, has those opportunities for us. She always, like, sends out emails every, like, day, I swear. And she's always sending out, like, all the opportunities, like, look at this scholarship. Look at this program. I'm going to help you get into this if you need it. And she's really into that, and she, we all want to support each other. We all want to get our dreams. And I think it's really important for that in English class, because in other classes, I don't think you would, because in English, you always have to speak about what the book means, about what, how this connects, like, how this might connect to your own life, how this connects to the author's life, how this is going to affect the world, and how it, literature affects other people. So, yeah.
Thank you.
So when entering high school, my one goal was just to, like, pass and, like, get through it. And then, so when I got to Puente, like, especially during COVID, I was like, damn, I realized I don't know what I'm going to do with anything, like, I have no idea. And I remember Ms. Sandoval was always sending emails, like, oh, go to this conference, go to this, like, program. And I was like, I kept ignoring them, and then one day I finally decided to go. And I went to Close the Gap Conference. It was like Women of Color, and they were like, sharing their stories of how they got into their position, like CEO, judge, like producer. And that, like, really motivated me, so I started, like, researching, like, what I wanted to do. I knew I wanted to be like, an advocate for, like, marginalized communities, and like, I wanted to do something in business. So I started looking for, like, fellowships and internships, and I found one at Fulfill, where you write curriculum for, like, in textbooks, and like, you write case studies for students. It's connected to business, but then also, like, how are you going to help your community? And I got to write two case studies, one about how the legalization of marijuana, how it's actually affected African-Americans, if it's actually benefited them or not, and how, like, how museums are, like, stealing, like, artifacts from colonial times, and how they're not returning, and how it's, like, related to business. And I got to put those two things together, and I don't think I would ever have had the opportunity or, like, the resources if I didn't get those emails. So, yeah.
Thank you. Now open it up to the board.
Thanks for the great presentation. Hearing from students, teachers, and parents is, really gives us a good insight into what the program offers, and it sounds like it offers a lot. You know, the, the family aspect, the college and museum visits, literature, and the college prep. It's just above and beyond what this program provides to its students. Also seeing the club aspect is great. I've known some of you for a long time, since, you know, sixth grade, a Canyon, Alexa. And hearing how this program has prepared you for your futures, and also giving your family some insight, as well as something that's unique and something that is, you know, important for us juniors who are looking at college next year. So thank you for all the work that you're putting in, and thank you for your presentation.
Trust you. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just thought we were going away.
That's, trust your name and go ahead. I was actually going to call your name.
Oh, okay. Well, here we go. Okay, thank you. So sorry for that distraction on my part. And I really enjoyed hearing about this and getting such a holistic picture of what you guys are doing at Puente. It sounds like an absolutely incredible program. And a few things that kind of, like, stood out to me while I was listening to all of you speak about your experiences. I think it's really impressive, you know, for a ninth grader to be like, I'm going to make a four-year commitment to something. That is, that alone, I think you all should feel proud of yourselves for, for doing that and going through, you know, the entire, the entire program. Obviously, there's tremendous support, you know, for all of you students. That's evident from your parents and from staff, you know, here today. It's, it's really a remarkable program. And I, I can see from just watching you all listen to each other speak, how supportive you all are of one another, and that, and that, that really is, you know, the nature of life, you know, to have these supportive communities. And it's really wonderful to see that that's growing for you at the high school. I love it. You know, one of your parents mentioned that this is such a great opportunity to find pride in your culture and to take that sense of shame of your background and set it aside. You know, I, I come from a family with a first-generation American immigrant mother. I get it, you know. I saw that in her and her family. And what a wonderful opportunity for you to be getting that now, and for it to be coming full circle, you know, and to see it in your kids. As a parent, like, that, I just responding to it. I think that it's wonderful that you guys are getting this opportunity to understand financial literacy. I don't think we always think about that as being something that we should be teaching at school, but we really should, you know. Our world is so dependent on it. And I think back, you know, I graduated high school in 1891, knowing nothing about money, credit, banks, anything. And, you know, I'm still figuring that out, and I'm going to be 50 next week. And so you are 100 steps ahead. Fantastic. And then obviously, you know, the data speaks volumes, so thank you for sharing that with us. You know, it's, it's just a really fantastic thing to see, and I'll definitely be following you on Instagram to see what's going on. And I'd love to attend an event. So thank you very much for being here tonight.
Yeah, thanks for a nice presentation. I'm very interested in Puente, you know, being married to a Peruvian. I sort of have to be. But I have two questions about it. You mentioned expanding the program potentially to other students. I was wondering, I mean, this is a very good program, and it has considerable success. I was wondering if, is it a model that we could use with other groups, perhaps, that might benefit from a similar concentration of effort? So that's one question. And my second question is, I'm not sure that this is aimed at you, or maybe it's aimed at Suzie over here. How is Puente funded? So thanks again. I'll pick the answers, however you want to give, but great presentation.
It was actually included in the, I think there was a number in there for.
So it is part of our ZBB. It is out of the unrestricted ones.
So Ms. Sandoval actually has Puente, but she has 300, 400 other kids. It's just that the difference is that the same, the students have the same counselor. So she's actually, this is, I have to say, about six years ago. I know we've had it for a few years, but the, I think the first couple of years I was here, it was about, it was not this. We needed a counselor. We needed a Mrs. Sandoval. And, and when you keep hearing her name, this is what's really critical. Mrs. Sandoval has been, because she's dedicated to this program, it makes a huge difference.
And that's good. That means maybe we could replicate the program in, in other areas.
Say that, that this program does have a lot of statewide support. From Puente comes out of UC Berkeley, and a lot of strategy and funding comes from UC Berkeley and the support that is received. And so the replication can be had, but it does require a lot of strategy behind it. I know we have a lot of work behind also doing ethnic studies. This program also is, it's open to all, so anybody can join. It's not reserved for people of Latinx or Chicano descent. It's open to all. And, but if we're thinking about Um, and, but if we're thinking about the focus of the, the literature, um, it could be replicated, absolutely. And that maybe requires a university partnership.
Um, yes, this is a fabulous program. Um, I, I think it's really important for students to see themselves in literature and in the books that they have. And I think a few of you mentioned that. Um, the four students presenting, uh, you guys are uh, and girls are really great. Uh, and the parents who came and the counselor, Ms. Sandoval, and of course, uh Stacy Sutherland. Thank you for all the work you've been doing. I think um, the, the thing that was said that hit me the most was um, I guess I'm always interested in what motivates students as a teacher myself. And uh, that part where you said visiting colleges is motivating. You know where you want to be. Yeah, thank you.
Hi there. Um, I have a rambling comment that I will try to edit to make not rambling. I have two questions and an offer. So three pillars of my life, my familia, my family, Castro Valley and the University of California. I've worked at the University of California now for almost twenty-two years um, in various roles. Um, and my original role, I remember when uh Pointe wasn't based at UC Berkeley, it was part of the Office of the President and the unit next door to my unit. But in my early career, I knew a lot of these folks who were doing these outreach programs with high school students at UC. And I was newish to California and um, I, I, I say this with pride, my, my, my blood runs blue and gold. I believe in the mission of the University of California, I believe. I was actually reading Clark Kerr last night, that's how dorky I am. But he's the guy who came up with this notion of the higher, the plan for higher education in California, which came up with our community college, Cal State University of California, sort of trifecta, to sort of give us different pathways. And the one thing that I'll say as a University of California employee and these people I've worked with over the years is the belief in access and equity. We do something very special in this state that you do not see replicated in any other state. We talked to children from first generation families and we get them into college. One of our student workers back when I was working at Berkeley about fifteen years ago, um, she's mom. And uh, she was a student uh worker in our office. And I just, I didn't know who that was. I didn't know who they, I didn't know the story, right, of the, of this group. And it was just so profoundly moving to me to know that she came here as a refugee and here she was at UC Berkeley. She now works for the UC system, has a family, lives in the Central Valley. But what, I, I think we're just so blessed to live in a state where we say our values are that we're going to invest in these systems of higher education and we're gonna find ways to access to get you there. And I just want you to know as an employee of UC, there are so many people dedicated to make that happen. So my offer would simply be happy to talk to you guys whenever I've, I, I, I love the UC system. I've been to all the campuses. I'm very bullish on UC Riverside and particularly for Chicano Latino Studies. Um, also if you want to study insects, it's a great place to go. But um, I, I have a lot of insight on, yeah, so I have a lot of insights and, and citrus fruits too and avocados. But um, but happy to, 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 to talk to you all at some point. My first question is simply, how do we have conversations about a technical um careers? You know, we talk about, this is great, this college, college readiness is great. I'm also mindful that historically sometimes, you know, having grown up in the South, tracking was a real thing of not creating opportunities going to college. So how do we talk to students who might be in this program who maybe college at the end isn't the right choice? Or maybe there's different um, uh, um, opportunities? And then my last question is simply, how do I get a T-shirt?
Good question. We actually have our T-shirt sells right now. So if you go on the website, you can purchase T-shirts and um hoodies. Um, but to your question, so that's one thing that I do in the seminar is that we explore a lot of different avenues. Because sometimes some of our kids are not ready for that, but that doesn't mean that you shouldn't be in our program, right? It's because you can get to different places in a different way, right? There's not just one route. So we do talk about vocational, we talk about community college, we talk about certification and that at my age, if you go back to get a bachelor's, you can still do that. Cause education is always gonna be there. So we explore that a lot so that if there are hiccups, cause life happens and maybe you don't end up where you want it to be at, that you can still, you're resilient, you'll persevere and you'll still make it to get what it is that you need. So yeah, so we do explore the different options because they're out there.
Yes. They're fifteen. Superintendent Amade, I'm gonna hand it over to you to close this out.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. It's always wonderful to hear from students. As I said, about six, seven, six years ago, there was, because you have to do what they just talked about or you actually get dropped from being a Pointe and we were about to be there. And that's why we really worked hard to revive it. And I would say it was around the same time that, that uh Dr. Raymond started as well. Because it was really important to us and Ms. Sandoval has been absolutely amazing and just the, the glue that made it work. So thank you so much for the presentation. Excellent job.
We are going to move on to our partnership with um, Tiversio Vasquez Health Center at Castro Valley High School. Superintendent Amade.
Gonna get us started here and then we'll have the um, our team present. But I just want to share a little bit of history. Um, about eight years ago, it was the first year I got here. I remember being at the Wellness Committee with Mr. Howard, Trustee Howard and Trustee Dot Theodore, who had already been working really hard to bring, it was about the wellness, it was about health, it was about just supporting kids in all sorts of ways. So we did have a couple of partners at that point that we were talking to, but it didn't really work out. The, this is a huge endeavor and you really need to think it through. Um, so we got to a point where we said the most important thing right now is having a wellness center. So then, you know, that advocacy again from the Wellness Committee and, and the Governing Board was to, let's make sure that we do that through Measure G. And then at the same time, we were exploring, how do we, is there a possibility to have a health center? Um, and I, I want to give kudos to one of our community members, uh, Mr. Cliff Sherwood, who has a wonderful connection to Tiversio Vasquez Clinic and he's always watching out for us. So he came, I know he talked to Mr. Howard, he talked to me and said, there's an opportunity. So he introduced us. And then um, at that point, then we decided to go visit. We went to New Haven with Mr. Howard and Dot Theodore and saw the clinic with, with our whole team here. Um, and that's where it kind of started. We've been working with uh, Tiversio Vasquez Health Center for about a year and a half, a year at least. And we are very excited to present to you what we have so far and where we're going. So Ms. Marion Meadows and Mr. McMaster.
So much.
And uh, before you get started, I do want to say uh, Ms. Catherine Horner is actually from Tiversio Vasquez and she's been absolutely wonderful working with us and supporting us. And of course Suzie Chan is all over this project. So.
Definitely. Well, thank you so much for the opportunity to present to, to you, the board, to our community uh here and, and afar. Um, I have the heavy lift tonight of essentially introducing uh, Ms. Meadows and getting out of the way. But um, she's gonna give us uh, with the help, some help from Ms. Chan, an overview of uh, the expansion of our health offerings to our students. Um, and with this really exciting partnership that's in front of us. And so uh, without further ado, our Coordinator of Behavioral Health, Ms. Marion Meadows.
Thank you, everyone. Just a little bit. So as our superintendent and Nick outlines, um, this has been, uh, this has been a project that's been going on for a long time. And we are really excited to give you a little bit about the history of this work uh, over time. Really, we're looking at the last decade, I would say, um, if we, if we trace it back. We're gonna talk about Tiversio Vasquez as our partner. They are, have an amazing reputation in the communities who are really lucky to have them as a partner and then what our next steps will be. So the history really quickly around school-based health and wellness in Castro Valley. We um, many years ago, again, probably eight years ago revamped the Wellness Council and Trustee Howard was on that, Trustee um, Theodore was on it as part of the committee, the larger Wellness Council in our district, but also the committee to, to start looking at wellness. And that includes the, the visioning from the very beginning around the behavioral health, our wellness center, which was wellness um, behavioral health focused. Um, the wellness, current wellness plan just received board approval um, in this, in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So the, the Wellness Council and the Wellness Plan continues. And so this is part of work that's been built on for several, several years moving forward. Uh, in our district, we have our nutrition services and food distribution part of wellness. That includes our daily food distribution during COVID nineteen, remember that? That was a huge lift. Free school breakfast and lunch for all students, that's amazing. It's a really important part of wellness and health in our district. And also community partners, including Moms Against Poverty for a few distribution for our homeless families. They're a really part, important part of this uh, health and wellness work. Um, when it comes to um, health services specifically, we have our credentialed school nurses, two of them have served students district-wide. They do vision and hearing screenings. We have health offices and aides. At many of our sites, we have community immunization clinics, remember Boo the Flu, that was before COVID. So Boo the Flu was for the flu. Um, but those are really popular and many, many kids and families came. I know I took my kids, I got my flu shots there. So there is a history of community health in Castro Valley um, around immunization clinics, but also an increased need. And the nurses also do TB testing and professional development for all staff around like EpiPens and Narcan and um, they do that work and also they have the incredibly heavy lift of the COVID response, which they've been in charge of. So their work is already very large for our, our district and the need has increased over time. We're gonna talk about that in a minute. And then as you've heard me present on many times around behavioral health services, we have school social workers at all of our sites, partnerships with local uh, community partners and local universities. We have three wellness centers now, this year is really exciting to uh, report. We have a crisis response team. And we're building our ability to be reimbursed for services through Medi-Cal. So that's a big part of our sustainability plan as we move forward. So this work is big and it encompasses all aspects of health. We also have our health education curriculum. We have physical health education at all of our, all levels. So they're another important part of this work. So as we start talking about what a health clinic might bring, it's built on top of this into kind of integrated school health model. So the community health considerations, I mentioned the immunization clinics, that was an example of, of a really great response when we offered something to the community, getting hundreds of kids and families through our clinics. Um, previous needs assessments, um, especially when we were looking at the Wellness Center, we were, um, we were approached by local health partners, but at the time, the need assessment didn't quite match what the partner was offering. And so we focused on behavioral health, as Superintendent said. We had limited physical space available at the time for both uh, uh, health partner and behavioral health. And our health offices were only able to offer really basic services, right? Due to staffing limitations and just the limit of what they, the scope of what they can brought, can provide when it comes to medical care. So our current needs are no surprise to anyone. COVID has been huge, it highlighted the need for community access to immunizations. Not just our students, but siblings and parents and families and staff. And then also an increased need for onsite healthcare so that families don't have to leave, students don't have to leave campus to get medical care. Um, and also our um, board members and district leadership developed relationship with our partner, who I'm excited to talk more about, and that's Tiversio Vasquez uh, Health Center. So they're, uh, they have an excellent reputation in the community. Catherine can tell you more, I'm gonna give you, give you the basics here. But um, the mission is that they're dedicated to promoting the health and wellbeing of our community by providing accessible, high-quality care. Individual and organizational commitment are to ensure this human right, thinking of health as a human right, your quality service, ag of advocacy and community empowerment. That is a social justice mission and that's the kind of partner we want for our kids and families. The vision is uh, they have the word right, sophisticated integration of health delivery systems, including school-based, which we'll talk about, to ensure that the, the, the Terosio Vasquez Health Center functions as a comprehensive, fiscally viable and culturally competent system of healthcare. Critical, critical as, as a partner in our community. While addressing the root causes of healthcare disparities and empowering our community. These are the conversations we need to have here in Castro Valley. So we're really lucky to have a partner that's already been doing the work for, for decades. So their health services department in particular, offers culturally competent, age-appropriate, convenient and affordable primary care and health ed services to adolescents and families through their school-based health centers. Good news, they're at big high schools. Tennyson High, Hayward High and Logan High School, right? Logan is our big, big sister, big brother, they're, they're bigger than Castro Valley High. But we know they can be successful at big high schools. That, that was a, a critical characteristic, right? So the services provided at the current clinics that we're talking with Tiversio about are um, the following. They offer physical exams, child wellness exams and sports physicals. That's a big one we wanna, we wanna pay attention to. Primary care services, dental, minor first aid, immunizations and boosters, uh pharmacy prescriptions, diagnosis, treatment, medical conditions, reproductive health services. That's a really important one too. They offer health education and a lot of outreach. You can tell by their mission and vision that they're committed to outreach and um, connection to families. That's a really important part through health education uh, presentations for lots of audiences. Um, assisting in community-wide health promotion events, that, that outreach and visibility part. And then specialty service referrals for our unaccompanied immigrant minors and teen parents. So again, longstanding history, they know what they're doing, they're at big high schools. Um, and these are the, these are the services that we both know we have need for. And frankly, as someone who works at the Wellness Center, kids are coming in the Wellness Center asking for this stuff and we have to refer them off-site right now, cause we don't have it. So if we have that partner and have that service available on campus, they're gonna stay on campus and receive it. Okay, so the location here, here's the genius of how this whole, all worked out. We were, the Wellness Center was in portables and it was built like a clinic. So I could reach over and touch a sink in my office for two years. It was right there, I washed my hands every day in that sink. Didn't need it as a mental health person. But so as we got into our beautiful um, brand-new building for the, the Wellness Center, the portable stayed, stayed on campus. And so now we're able to look at those portables that were built as a clinic with the right amenities to be able to have Tiversio housed in those two portables. So if you remember, it's between the F Wing and the five hundred wing. Um, it will need some facility upgrades and I'll let Ms. Chan um, talk more specifically about that. Do you want me to hand it off to you?
Yes, okay. Thank you. Um, so yeah, so um, as uh, Ms. Meadows mentioned, um, those, we are, we are fortunate to have um, facilities, right? So we still have the two portables. Um, uh, we'll just need to um, make sure that, well, some facility upgrades. Um, uh, it's already outfitted um, as health uh, clinic space because of uh, what uh, we've used it in the past. Um, some facility upgrades, just highlighting a few, we, we, we're trying to connect the two portables. So then there's um, um, there's another um, exit door. Um, uh, currently there's only one, so that's what we're, we're working with, with, with the clinic. Um, there are, uh, we're also looking at adding entry doors and uh, alarm system, door buzzer and as well as um, uh, additional outlets and cabinetry. So that's what we're, we're looking at. Um, uh, we're, uh, we're, our um, Director of um, Facilities, uh, Sharon Truquins is very involved in the process. Um, and so we've done um, um, a lot of the tours and we're doing one again um, on next Friday uh, with the team as lo, uh, as well as the technology department because of um, internet and wifi, um, you know, connectivity and all of that. So that's what we're doing. Um, the district uh, as part of this, um, we're, we're also working on, I know, I'm not sure if it's in the, um, I know we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it more and we'll share that with you. We're also working with the clinic on the uh, agreement, so that's in the works right now. Um, so um, we, we will um, uh, bring that um, uh, to you for review and approval. Um, and what will be included in the agreement is uh, the district will provide custodial services uh, as we always do with any of our facilities, right? So we provide custodial services, groundkeeping, maintenance, as well as campus supervision. It's very important because um, uh, as we mentioned, that this, this uh, will, uh, we will have community access. And so it's important, important that we have um, staff that will be um, doing the supervision um, throughout the, you know, when, when the clinic is open um, uh, during the day and also after school hours.
Thank you, Ms. Chan. Um, so to kind of round that, that conversation out, the, the pieces around not just the facility, but the Um, so to kind of round that, that conversation out, the, the pieces around not just the facility, but the way that we're integrating with the current health office. The wellness center, the clinic and the health classes and PE classes, a curriculum piece. So we're looking at kind of the four walls of integrated school health. So again, we, we've done so much work around integrating that already. Tiberio will come in, the clinic will come in as part of a partnership. And making sure that those communication lines are really tight and that we're really supporting students getting access, but also managing confidentiality, you know, and privacy. Those are, those are concerns that we take really seriously. So quickly, the implant implementation timeline, this is our board meeting tonight, the presentation. And then we're looking at, um, it's, it's a quick timeline, but we're, we're moving forward on it mostly because we want to get. Presentations out to the community, to parents, to students. We want to do targeted focus groups. I want to do Puente. I think we should go to Puente and talk to them about this clinic. They're amazing. Um, at Castro Valley High, but being really um, specific about reaching out to, to groups of students to get their feedback on what they see. Are either access barriers or access, you know, um, opportunities to make sure we're getting that feedback. And then in June and July, looking at recommendations from those uh, presentations and continuing to plan with our partner. Um, partner in Tiberio and then also our health office in particular. And then we're aiming for an August open. So ambitious, but we're confident we can do it. Um, because we, we've built a lot of this integration and coordination already. So next steps as we see them, again, the pre- presentations to parents, staff, students. Doing specific focus groups with student groups, working on the memorandum of an understanding, as Ms. Chan mentioned, getting the facilities prepared. Um, there's also a piece around engagement with additional funders. There's a lot of interest, right? When we build the infrastructure, other folks want it. They want to contribute because they know it's going to be successful. That has been the case with the wellness center. This is going to be the case with the clinic. Um, I'll let other folks speak to that if, if there are questions about the funders. Um, but also thinking about what's our outreach plan to students, to families and to community members once that portion of the clinic is open. And again, going back to this coordination planning between the health office and the wellness center specifically around confidentiality and privacy. Parent engagement and how we, you know, handle referrals and launch. So again, we're um, we're really lucky to have a partner that's so steeped in the community and already knows how to do this work. So we'll be learning together as we um, continue to build on the, on the health and wellness that this board and our leadership has committed to since I've been here. And that's eleven years. So it's been, I know, a longstanding commitment and investment by this board. So I will step aside.
Yeah, just to kind of finish the presentation, I, you know, when we talked about. The glue and the importance of having Ms. Sandoval. I have to say, I, I want to thank Ms. Meadows because she's actually built something like this before in another district. She has all that experience, Mr. McMaster and the whole team and Suzie and Sharon and Jason. I, um, you know, the fact that we have eleven social workers, if you look back like eight, ten years ago, that was not the case. And sometimes it takes a little while to build these and things just fall into place. Because when we were talking about having that health center eight years ago, we didn't have a wellness center. We didn't have the building. We didn't have the additional space. We didn't have, uh, you know, the, the programs that we have right now. So it's taken a while, but that focus on, okay, this is important. Let's just see what else we need to do. In addition to really having amazing partners in this community. Like the fact that we had, you know, Mr. Sherwood coming to us and saying that and the fact that, you know, there were connections with. With our board members who were really involved was really critical. So we are looking at other funders for uh, some of this because what we really need with the, the cost we actually put in the board uh, agenda. It's the secu, uh, the campus supervised uh, the security person. Um, and a couple of additional hours for a custodial, custodian, uh, but that's it. Um, because we have an amazing partner who has the rest of it and then the rest of it is really just the building upgrade, which we have written grants for. So what I'm actually, we've got some good partners, um, and I'll name one of them, very interested Fremont Peg. So, and other partners that we're trying to bring on board. So, thank you.
Trustee Howard?
Uh, this may be premature to ask and you may not have an answer. I was just wondering if there's any uh. Indication of what the staffing and the facility might look like.
Answer that, Ms. Horner? Sure, that'd be great. I'm gonna. Give uh, Ms. Horner the mic to answer those questions.
Yes. Yeah, nice to meet you all. Catherine Horner and I'm the chief operations officer at Tiberio. Um, so we are still finalizing the staffing model, but it will be um, one family uh, practitioner. So one family provider, medical assistant reception, um, health educator, um, hopefully as well. And that's kind of the core minimum staffing. And then obviously, um, we're trying to, we're excited to build a space that we could potentially grow additional resources into.
Um, I want to jump in because you reminded me when you said the, the staffing. When we visited, um, when we have taught, we heard that a lot of our families who actually qualify. For services were going to other health centers outside of our school to other high schools and places. So we do have, right now we have thirty-six, six percent, thirty-seven, thirty-six percent of our students actually qualify, which is an increase for Medi-Cal. But you can also take other people and then build the, build their insurance, right?
Yeah, so um, I mean, Tiberio Vazquez Health Center is a federally qualified health center. Um, we are seventy percent um, Medicaid funded, um, so Medi-Cal funded. Um, but then if uh, students come and they have other insurances, there's other ways that we can um, bill for services. Or have programs or grants that um, support those. Yeah.
Our board members asked really, really great questions that we sent the responses to. Um, about a lot of what we had. So if you want to share a couple of those.
Vice President Kuziak?
I have three questions. Um, for one, this is just really cool. A, I, I think we should be doing this. I think it's wonderful that we're able to use some of these portables. Um, I think I would love, I'm just going to say it out loud. Could we create a permanent space and like ask for money to build a building for this? Um, and have we thought about where that could be? We had those kind of thoughts or a facility that's in line with the purpose?
We always have those thoughts.
Okay.
We need a second, and second floor in the wellness center. That's, that's where everything will go now. I'll, I'll hand that over to the facilities folks, but.
Certainly the opportunities.
Yes, and that's what I was going to say. We, we do definitely uh, can look at facilities opportunity study that we looked at, right? This is another added thing, but um, in terms of space, we can always look at the second floor of, like Ms. Meadows said. But definitely um, a lot of different options that we can explore.
Um, my second question, which I didn't ask in our questions. Um, and I think I know the answer now because of how, what the model is going to be here. Um, the reimbursements aren't coming on our budget. It's going to sit with your budget. And we have this MOU that you're like present on our, on our, on our campus. And we have some other services like security, et cetera, that would support it. So we're not getting into the medical billing uh, business. Um, my last question is simply, you know, uh, unfortunately, we live in a country that doesn't value access to healthcare for all. Um, what do we do in the cases where some, a family might not have insurance? Are we going to help them qualify for, for, for uh, the programs the state of California offers? Or are we just going to say, here, here you go, it's fine? Are we going to send them a bill?
Um, yeah, so we uh, we face that every day in our clinics, right? So um, uh, families, patients walk in and they don't quite have insurance. We have staff who are financial counselors that can sign them up for Medi-Cal. Um, or, you know, there's different ways to um, do same-day services with Medi-Cal. Um, and then we can also sign them up for Cover California depending on what their, their needs are. Does that answer your question?
Um, I think it's great that we're doing this in the high school. Wonderful. I think there's probably a very obvious need there. I think all of our students throughout the district need access to this. So my understanding of the intention would be like, any resident could probably take advantage of this. At some point, we'd scale up to that, right?
Right. I mean, one of the things we're excited about is that the way that the portables are located. Um, uh, it is, it will be open to the community as well. Um, and we know from our needs assessment data that uh, the zip code that the high school is in is, is an area that does not currently have a federally qualified health center and could really benefit from those services. So we are really excited to be able to provide more resources. Yeah.
Before, you said something about portables. I just want to, I just want to make sure because sometimes when we say portables, people think it's this thing that you, you know, it's like. Temp, many of our buildings are actually portable. It's a, like a permanent portable. And once it's done, when you go in, unless we say it, you may not even know. So it's, it can stay for a long, long time, but if we had the means at some point, that would be almost. I just wanted to clarify that because I don't want that to be the real, you know, the, the narrative that it's in a portable and it's like, yeah, it's a real building.
Trustee Raymond and then uh, trustee Adams and then uh, Quentin.
Uh, okay, so just a comment and then a question, hopefully very quick. Um, I think this is such a commendable thing that we're working on. I'm really excited about it and I'm very happy to be. Here to support it, you know, in whatever way I can. Um, I. I, I, I'm, I'm a big believer in the idea of a community school and the idea that we're going to be providing this holistic. With a W H O L E holistic, you know, acts. Service and resource to our kids and their families. I just really, I love it. It warms my heart. It makes me feel really good. So hopefully, um, we can hope it be a big success. Um. I have a question that might be chew in the weeds about medical billing, kind of dovetailing on trustee Kuziak's question, which is like, so. How about those kids who come in and they are insured but don't have insurance cards, don't know who their insurers are? And um, HIPAA and privacy and reaching out to families to get insurance information, like where, how do we handle that? Is that something we need to think about right now or? I just, I, I do think that we're probably going to be dealing with a lot of situations that require privacy and sensitivity. Um, whether it's reproductive health or gender-affirming care. Or just, I don't want to talk to my parents about what I'm doing, you know?
There, there is a type to, um, there's a way to provide um, services and uh, it's called Family Pact. Um, so you can provide services and get reimbursed for it, um, while maintaining an adolescent's privacy. So we use that a lot. Um, for other things that are not reproductive health-focused, we do actually, there will be a process that we will work on. Um, to get uh, consent forms signed from parents. Um, that, that is part of what we do at all of our other schools.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to say, um, the mission statement about healthcare as a human right is really um, terrific. And uh, I'm very glad that this uh, center is coming to Castro Valley High. And hopefully will be accessed by, you know, uh, kids from and families across the district. Um, particularly, and you know, this is Women's History Month, uh, the reproductive healthcare right on campus is terrific. I know, uh, previous to this, you know, um, Planned Parenthood and whatnot is very far away. Uh, and if you don't have a car and you can't get there and all that kind of thing. So for that to be really right on campus for both boys and girls, but particularly for young women, um, is, is fabulous. Thank you so much for what you're doing.
So I just have a quick comment and then a question. I just wanted to comment on the uh, sports physicals that you're going to offer and how big of a deal that is. Because, you know, before it was such a hassle, so many loopholes you had to jump through, go to the doctors and then like CVS or some uh, pharmacy to get your, all those forms done. So the fact that we're just offering that on campus is great. And a quick question. So because this is on campus and thinking from a learning and education viewpoint. We have a medical careers program on campus. Would it be possible to maybe coordinate with them? And uh, anywhere, maybe the health classes on campus?
A great idea. We've been um, already working with the med careers classes on um, sort of specifically around sexual health needs. Such and sex education needs. So we've been starting those conversations. That's a great idea. To be able to um, figure out how to continue to, to partner with them and then in partnership with Tiberio, maybe thinking about. The health educator part of it, the peer health education part, because that's, that's the field they're going into. So that's a great idea. We've, we've just kind of started to talk with them, but um, I think that's a great resource to bring into the conversations and the student focus groups when we do that. We'll definitely make sure we're talking to them as well. But thank you for that idea. It's great.
What you just said reminded me, there's another opportunity that I wasn't even thinking about until you said that. Is our adult school and the medical uh, technician program that they have. I mean, there's a lot that we could actually connect. I think that's a really great, lots of people.
Good job, Quentin. Well, with that, we want to thank you for coming and joining us. We really appreciate the partnership. We're looking forward to what's to come. Uh, the community engagement and hopefully opening up the center together in August. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
We will move on to item eleven C. Certify the financial condition, second interim report twenty-two, twenty-three. Suzie?
Thank you. And um, let me just, hey, great. So we, this is the um, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three second interim report. Um, there's a few slides here you've seen um, before. Um, so I'm going to skip those and then just this is a reminder, our annual budget cycle, we are actually um, halfway there. Um, our second interim really uh, puts us in a, you know, towards the halfway of our budget cycle. Um, and uh, then we have a couple of reports after the second interim report. So I'm going to uh, go straight to um, revenue. Um, so really um, second interim report, um, including and um, first interim. We look at changes, right? So we compare changes from um, the first interim to second interim. Um, last time we presented the twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three budget, uh, we looked at adopted budget to first interim. But this time, um, now that we have the second interim, we are looking at first interim, which is the last report that you approved. Um, to the second interim uh, for actuals through January thirty-first. So in terms of revenue, we have the three um, different pots of money that we get um, here. Local control funding formula um, increased by um, close to a million dollars and that's because of the increase in uh, unduplicated count. So that's uh, very good for us. Um, federal funds, minor, minor changes there. Um, second interim, you will typically see um, adjustments because um, this is around the time when we get the um, um, actual allocation from the federal and state. So um, we make a projection based, you know, we do an estimate based on the number of students um, that we have. Uh, but then, um, you know, around this time, we do get the, the actual allocation. Um, and so that's, that's the adjustment that you see there for federal as well as law and also state. Um, uh, some of that three hundred, two thousand dollars per state is the lottery, um, as we always get the first um. Uh, the report um, for the first round of uh, of funding for lottery. We, we did get an increase and that's about um, about a, a, a hundred thousand dollars. Local revenue, um, um, most of this is coming from the um, uh, donation. So the next slide is just exactly what I've shared. Um, one point eight million total uh, revenue increase. I've shared the LCFF, um, the California Apprenticeship Initiative. They, um, we did uh, get an increase of um, two uh, two, two hundred thousand dollars there. And then emergency connectivity program, uh, grant that um, Ed Services. Um, um, actually uh, uh, applied for is the dual immer, uh, language immersion grant. And that's um, to over two hundred thousand dollars and that's a wonderful uh, news for us. Um, and then some donations there that I've shared, uh, including fees that we've collected this year. Um, as far as expenditures, uh, again, looking at first interim, um, changes to second interim, salaries and benefits there. Um, this, what happens is, uh, I'm sorry, I'm going to go have to go back. Um, so one point eight million dollars, uh, uh, most of the time we, we do need to, like, especially for our restricted funds. We um, we budget revenue and we also budget the same amount in expenditures. That's why you're seeing uh, changes in the, on the expenditure side. So when you increase um, uh, revenue on the restricted side, you also need to increase the expenditures. Um, um, the expenditure side. So salaries and benefits uh, increased by six hundred thousand dollars. And then um, books and supplies, um, books and supplies will be your lottery, that you know, the lottery that we receive. Um, books and supplies will be your lottery, you know, the lottery that we receive. Um, some services there, capital outlay and other outcome. So um, just kind of giving you the 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 back or the um, where the changes are coming from, I should say. Um, uh, about six hundred um, thousand dollars is the um, uh, coming from the apprentice uh program, apprenticeship program. Um, emergencies and safety budget, uh, as well as some technology purchases that we plan for, um, some additional Chromebooks because some um, some of those Chromebooks that we purchased um, three or four years ago are already, you know, we need to replace them. Um, and of course, then the revised funding allocations that mentioned the dual language immersion grant, uh, we're very excited about. Um, special ed allocation donations as well as um, we budgeted some carryover. Um, and um, for special ed and also um deferred maintenance. Um, um, that's what we um, carried over from prior year. Um, looking at components of ending fund balance, after we looked at revenue and subtracted all of our um projected uh, or um, estimate uh expenditures. Um, our total unrestricted and restricted, which is our combined, our ending fund balance is twelve point five million dollars and then subtract all of these um, things that we uh, we always have to set aside, including the legally restricted funds. Um, uh, and committed um, after committing our supplemental funds left over. We are our reserve for economic uncertainties is seven point um, uh, close to seven point seven million dollars and that's about five points four seven. I do want to note that first interim, this actually uh, uh, went up a little bit. Uh, last uh, first interim, it was at five point three two percent or seven point four million dollars. So we did um, what we look at during second interim is we look at any type of savings that we have, whether it's salaries or anything that we um, in books and supplies and services that we feel that we're not going to need for the rest of the year. We look at, you know, scrubbing those uh budget and and really seeing, okay, what can we um, look at or reduce, then um, it will, and this is the outcome of that. That's why it's uh, it's up to uh seven point seven from seven point four million dollars. And we continue to that to do that for the rest of the year. Um, looking at multi-year projections, as we always want to um see where we are uh, for the next couple of years and not just the current year. Um, we are, you're seeing uh, at the bottom there, I'm not going to highlight every single one, but uh, do want to highlight the bottom. Uh, reserve for economics uncertainties, the dollar amount there, including the percentage. So this is um, a lot higher than prior, than first interim because of the assumptions, right? So very important um, that I highlight for you the um, zero uh, that well, cost of living adjustment. Actually, I apologize. I don't know. I that's an error. It says zero, but it should be cost of living adjustment of six point five six percent in twenty-two, twenty-three, which is what we have in our budget this year. And next year, we assume the eight point one three percent, and I have an asterisk there because at the bottom, I wanted to make sure that you're all, uh, and I'm sure you've already heard this and we've shared it that uh, last month. Um, the state revenue shortfall may impact the proposed COLA. Uh, that's already assumed in this multi-year. Okay, so eight point one three percent. Um, and twenty-four, twenty-five, um, we assume in our budget a zero cost of living adjustment. Um, I, we also um, adjusted the uh, what we already assumed in the budget because it's or it's included in the proposed budget, the one-time arts, music and discretionary block grant. I had to do that because that's what's in the proposal, right? So uh, we don't know um, what may revise and ultimately what the uh governor will will approve or for for our for twenty-three, twenty-four budget. So in the multi-year, I had to reduce the discretionary block grant by one point nine million dollars. And then, and then on the expenditure side, it increased the call purse. Um, call stairs is staying the same, um, nineteen point one percent, but call purse is actually getting an increase from twenty-five point three seven to twenty-seven percent. So um, I want to, uh, so because I highlighted the eight point one three percent and knowing that there is a revenue shortfall. Um, I wanted to give you a different slide um, that you're not, you have not seen before. This is less just scenario. So um, just showing you um, a change in COLA by point five percent, which is really looking at from from eight point one three to seven point six three. Um, this is how our um, you, uh, re- um, reserve will look like. Um, so point five is close to half a million dollars. Okay, and then a one percent is about a million dollars. So that's how it's, it, so again, what I mentioned may revise. Let's just say it's not eight point one three percent, it's seven point six three. We know that that um will impact our uh reserve for economic uncertainties and so that percentage is going to um, uh, change. Um, other funds um, for twenty-two, twenty-three, and these are the ending fund balance for each um of these funds. Um, and close to twenty-three point, uh, so it's twenty-three point seven million dollar total for all of these funds. And then um, we um, just next steps here that you, we've shared with you uh before and then uh happy to answer any questions.
If um, the one point wanted to just add the one point nine million. Um. We kept, I know we're all pushing to see if the governor would actually use dip into his reserve instead of cutting. I have to say, just hearing the conversations and and hearing even the most supportive people kind of say, well, we've given so much money to education. I'm not sure that we can do that. I just don't want to, I I had higher hopes before when we started the conversation than like, like even Saturday when Alex Lee was asked. Um, you know, so we're meeting with our uh local legislator and I think it's a really important point to share with Liz tomorrow. Um, we've got it. I mean, it's a huge cut. So, just wanted to share that.
Trustee, oh, vice president Kuziak and then trustee Raymond?
Yeah, I just, so in the scenario of that, would they be clawing back the money because we already have the money? Or would they just like debit? Debit us going forward, just reduce it?
So um, we already received the first half of the money that we're supposed to get. And so my understanding is um, the second half of the money they will hold back.
Yeah, I'm I'm gonna pass.
Trustee Howard?
Uh, here we are again. Right? So uh, we were deficit spending at first interim, uh interim, and now we're deficit spending faster at second interim. And we're entering a period where we're, and that right now assumes that the governor doesn't touch us. And all we've heard from school services and capital advisors is that they're gonna hit us. I think it's great that you put the two caveats in there. That's really good. But you know, the other point I'd like to make here is that, you know, we have the budget there, but the budget isn't set in stone. We could still cut costs in there in various ways and, you know, we're slow. I mean, I think we've been doing this since I was on the board, you know, it's just seems like a long time now. We're slowly going bankrupt. Because there's some other expenses in there that aren't included.
There aren't expenses? Oh, can you repeat what you just said last? I I I missed the last part that you just said. Sorry.
It was very profound, but it's sort of like, you know, we're slowly uh going bankrupt. We won't go bankrupt, but we're losing our reserves slowly.
Yeah, so I I think those are two different things. Going bankrupt is very different. We have a positive outlook. We are not going bankrupt. We are actually doing well. But our reserve is going down if they don't give us the COLA. Well, because right now we do. We we also have to think about compensation increase and I get that. But we don't have all the, yeah. So to to, I agree with you that at one point, school districts were cutting left and right. And then we got, you know, a little bit more money. And much, much better last year, much better this year. We just have to see what happens to the year after. Right now, as you noticed, we are being very conservative and we're actually assuming zero COLA the year after. And the state is saying.
It's a three point five four.
Three point five four.
After, yes.
Yeah, and that's, yeah. So we're always like, you know, always saying we get zero the year after because we are not sure. Um, but I think you, your point of it, it just, they gave us money, but we need, the conversation needs to be, it's not even close to, because the cost of living continues to go up. Programs could cost more. And I have to say, one other thing that you will see when we do ZBB, we have almost a hundred more students in special education. We're going to talk about that as ZBB. We're talking about two million dollars, two, three million dollars. So we'll, we'll share that with you. And and I think people forget, when we talk about the cost of COVID and the social emotional toll it took on kids, we're talking about very young kids that are coming in with a lot of need. So, yeah.
I think I also want to uh share, if I can look at the, yeah. So um, just uh, and and I I failed to um, share this when I was, when we're looking at a multi-year projection. So um, the twenty-two, twenty-three is uh mentioned a five point four seven percent. Um, as of first interim for twenty-three, twenty-four, um, we were at five point nine four percent. So this did, this did increase after we've assumed the COLA and and all of the, and then the additional reduction plus the uh, plus the um, uh, increase to call purse, right? So it's we, you, uh, we've mentioned that the state, uh, the governor is not um, the, is the pension um, additional money for, to help us with our pension uh costs, um, is not included. So we've assumed that in the budget. Um, the twenty-four, twenty-five, which is our third year, so as um, um, superintendent superintendent Amadi mentioned that all three years, we are meeting our reserves. So we're not bankrupt. So I just wanted to make sure, make sure that that's noted. So six point uh five nine percent in the third year uh compared to three point one five percent, uh, not assuming uh a COLA in twenty-four, twenty-five. So this is, this changes there. Uh, we, we will continue to look at our ZBB. That's what we're uh going through right now. Um, seeing, make sure, making sure that our expenses are aligned and um, and that um, we're not spending more than what is already in the multi-year projection. Uh, if not, then we can look at maybe further reducing it to help um, our, our, our reserves.
So I will say that this is an action item. So.
I move approval over uh, of this item.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded. Are there any further comments or questions? Student Board Member Hanson.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak?
Yes, President Whitaker.
I will vote yes, so the motion passes six, zero. We'll move on to our next item eleven D, appoint four alternate committee members and two candidates to the regular committee members and appoint candidates to the older members to the Measure G Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Suzie?
Yes, so this is um, action item. Uh, we um, we do need, uh, so just kind of going back up, we, per the bylaws, we need at least seven uh voting members to the uh Citizen Bond uh Committee Oversight and five, uh, at least five alternate members currently, uh, because our um, five of our, our um, form uh, previous uh, voting members actually terminated, uh, completed their six-year service. And so we want to thank every single one of them for their service. Uh, and so um once we've learned that, we did go out and and seek more um, you know, candidates and we did receive nine applicant, um, applications here. Um, so we've noted um, the applicants and the uh category that they were, that are representing. And so we are um, seeking approval to move or or approve the alternate current alternate members, there are four of them, to um, be voting, to be um, appointed as a voting uh committee members. And then um, we have the other applicants uh for your consideration, two, we will need to um, uh, vote as um, voting members, the two brand new applicants as voting uh members and then the rest um, will be the alternate members.
Trustee Raymond?
I guess I just, how how shall we go about this?
So.
What's our best way of handling?
The easiest probably, um, good question. The easiest way is probably if you want to just first say if you want to vote for the four alternates to be, and then you can talk about the two new ones for that and then.
So I will make a motion that we do approve adding the current four alternates to the voting members of the board.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Student Board Member Hanson.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak?
Yes, President Whitaker.
I will vote yes, the motion passes six, zero. Next?
So of the candidates that you saw, now if you want to make a motion for two candidates to be regular members, voting members.
Oh, I wanted to know of the now voting members that we have so far, is there any category that we don't have? Somebody representing that has applied?
And not that has applied. There's one category.
I saw that.
We don't have anybody and they haven't applied.
I I just might mention uh, one name I saw on there. I know um, of this Carolyn Street. And I've seen her, I believe in uh AAUW and some other organizations. And so um, that would be one person I think who would be uh very good.
Carolyn Darcy?
Carolyn, I'm sorry, Carolyn Darcy.
Yes. Okay. Well, I'll just, I I actually had Carolyn Darcy on my kind of shortlist as well. Um. Another person who really stood out to me was um, Zizana Janko. Who I don't know, but I, it seems like she's got a lot of good background in terms of looking at this kind of stuff. Um, and then Mary Chris, um, I'm gonna butcher her name, I apologize, Mary Chris Linniak. Um, who has a lot of background in um, managing public funds, it looks like.
One, one thing that I did want to ask, uh, when we're talking about a representation from our community, does that give us a good representation as far as across different identifiers?
Yeah, so if you look at the numbers, you have enough to have two of them voted for as voting members. And then the rest would be um alternate. Like you could basically really, right? Take all of them. You just have to decide which two are going to be the voting members. So when I, at first. So that makes it easier. And our alternates, I honestly, like, they were here every time. It's, they were wonderful. So there's a great opportunity for alternates as well.
Uh, I I mean, I you named two of my top candidates. I thought Catherine McCarthy is out as well. Um, that's another candidate to consider. Um, I'm it's nice to hear that um, all of our other candidates that we might not select uh would be um, to be be alternates. So um, I'd say. I'd say Susanna Janko, Mary, Mary, Mary Chris Linniak, Catherine McCarthy and Carolyn Darcy probably were the ones that really stood out to me.
So I mean, we can take a motion?
We could.
I I would make a motion for Carolyn Darcy and someone else?
I'd say Mary Chris Melini.
Okay. Okay, Mary Chris. I I haven't, don't have the name in front of me, Meliniak.
It's a, it's spelled L Y N I E C, so Linniak.
Okay. So I make a motion for those two people to be the voting members.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Continue your preferential vote.
Yes.
See Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Yes.
Trustee Kuziak?
Yes.
I'll vote yes, the motion passes 6-0. Thank you. And thank you to all of our applicants. We really appreciate your commitment.
I think we need another motion to adopt the rest as alternates. So I will move that the remaining applicants on this list that we've been provided be.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, which ones, of the ones we have?
Yeah, we have Jen Zero, Catherine McCarthy, Chow Zhang, Renee Robles, Susanna Janko, and then Dale, Daley Ruiz, Daley Ruiz.
So which two, which, we already voted for Susanna, right?
We voted, we voted, you voted for Carolyn?
No, who who doesn't qualify, you said?
Oh, Puma Chandar.
Okay, so except for her, everybody else does.
So we need at least five.
At least five.
And there are six remaining.
Can it be six or?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. All right. So then in that case, will the remaining qualified applicants become the alternates to the committee?
Thank you, trustee Raymond.
I second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Student Board Member Hanson.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak.
Yes, President Whitaker.
I will vote yes, motion passes 6-0. And last but not least, in this section is approved personnel report.
I move approval of the personnel report.
I second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Trustee Raymond. Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak.
Yes, President Whitaker.
I will vote yes, the motion passes 5-0. We move on to item 12, Board Member Comments and Reports. Student Board Member Hanson, do you have any more to share with us tonight?
Just thought it was really great to hear the presentation from Quince and of course, the new health clinic that has come into CVHS. That was great to hear about and I'm looking forward to seeing how that's integrated into the community and how we can work with all the various teams and clubs and whatnot we have at the high school. So, thank you.
Trustee Raymond.
Okay, I'll try to keep it brief, but I have a lot of notes. So I did want to share that over the last few weeks, it feels like it's been like a year since we met. I attended things like Battle of the Valley, which is a great community event, not just limited to the middle schools. I went to the Alcosta Service District School Board Breakfast. I guess we were all there, weren't we? Yeah. And I felt very inspired hearing Angela Norman talk about community schools. And I love the things that we're doing in our district that can reflect that. And I'm looking forward to seeing how we can build on those things here in our district. I also attended a kind of seminar training put on by Moms Demand Action for Gunsence on school safety issues, which was very enlightening and eye-opening. And if anybody wants the slides from that, I'd be happy to share. I also visited our Family Resource Center with Nick McMasters and Cecilia Olaya. Fantastic. If you guys haven't seen it, should go, it was really, was really, that was, that was a great visit. Not just to see the practical support that's being given to families, but also like the logistical support. You know, it translates into so much. And I I think it's really, again, I think this is a great example of how we can support not just our students in a classroom, but the families and, you know, really set people up for success in this holistic manner. And I just love it. I'm really looking forward to going to see Mean Girls. So I'll be there. Yeah, I'm looking forward to that. My kid will probably drag me twice. Multiple times. And then I also wanted to share with the board that I've decided to offer my spot on the Budget Committee that we, you know, put together last time to trustee Kuziak. I I want to be really clear that this is not something I was asked to do. It's something that I feel strongly about, however. I I apologize for kind of like throwing a wrench in in this way, once the decision was made by our our board. However, I do want to say that that night I personally was compromised. I wasn't thinking very clearly. I needed antibiotics. It was bad. But I also wanted just to say that I feel like trustee Kuziak has really championed this idea of having a budget committee in our district for quite a long time. And I think his voice should be there. And so we decided to just trade roles. He'll be on the Budget Committee. I'll take the SOR Committee. And I hope that that is okay with everyone as a group. I did discuss it with Superintendent Amadi in a meeting. And again, I just really want to stress, this is not something I was asked to do. It's not something I was approached about. But I do feel very strongly about it. And I personally feel very good about the decision. And I feel like he's going to perform great on that committee. And I feel like SOR is a good place for me as well. So I'm, I feel good about it. And then I think that's all for tonight. So thank you very much, you guys.
Thank you for sharing, trustee Raymond, and for your vulnerability. And let's lock that in for the rest of the year.
It's locked, I promise. I won't. Yeah, and I and I'll just, I mean, you guys are all still getting to know me a little bit. I'm still going to know everybody else. But I do want to say that I'm not somebody who like changes my mind about things. Like, I'm not, I'm not, I don't, I don't like, I'm not, I'm not. I I I don't want to come across, I I hope this doesn't make me seem flaky because I'm not. I just really feel very strongly that he should be in that role. He has the right mindset for it and the background. So I wanted to see that happen. So, yeah.
Thank you. Trustee Howard.
I'm fine with it. So for what that's worth, I mean, well, the SOR Committee has a lot of value too. I tell you, that's going to be really important to us. Okay, it has been a long time. I'm sorry, I've got a list here. I'll go as fast as I can. As Quentin said, the Science Olympiad program up at Cal State was fabulous. That program is grown to be, it's amazing how many students they have in there and the great work that they're doing. I was also at the CTA School Board Breakfast. I managed to visit the high school. I especially wanted to go down the 100 wing just to see how it was. I have to say that on that morning, the rooms were warm. I'm glad. I hope they're still warm. I was at the, or attended the Language Immersion Committee meeting the other night. I was very impressed by the fact that they're moving into their second year and they are recruiting students. And they're also thinking very hard about how to make this work in the middle schools and high schools. That's very impressive, I think. Last Saturday, I attended a DSal Health Fair at Hayward Adult School that had a lot of the providers, including Tbersio there. I did want to say that the Public Health Commission's Student Mental Health Workshop over at Cherryland Community Center went very well, modest attendance, as was the DSal Health Fair the other day. But the providers were there, they were great. It was Tbersio, La Familia, La Clinica, and a whole bunch of others. And we're now planning a follow-up event for the providers because they would just like the opportunity to talk to each other. And astoundingly, they don't have any real mechanism for that. I was at the Eden Area ROP Board Meeting a few nights ago, and the big news over there in a sense is they're, you know, Blaine is now in charge over there. So they're doing a lot of things like Castro Valley. He's working on a governance handbook and a governance workshop coming up to facilitate the integration of two new board members in that. So that's working pretty well. And then at Rotary, last week, we had Kenny Khan, the principal at Redwood High School came to talk about all the stuff that they do over there, the, you know, the great wide range of programs that they have over there. He was very well received. He's, he's a great spokesperson for Redwood and for our district. That also gave us the opportunity to talk about something that a few of us started recently. After the last election, Tina and I had leftover campaign funds. And as we all, all five of us up here know, you can't just take those home and put them in your pocket. So we pooled those funds and talked to Kenny. And we've set up what are called the Keep Rising Awards, which are scholarships for the, or awards for the students at Redwood High School because they have no awards specific to Redwood at all. So now we'll be giving four awards. And the good thing about speaking at Rotary is we insured the funds for next year. So we know it's going to work for two, two years or so. So thanks to the generosity of the Rotary folks. And the last thing I'll mention is the Chamber this year is going to sponsor once again, finally, a live version of the Student Citizen of the Year on April 13th. And that's, whoops, principals and faculty pick a student at each participating school in the unincorporated areas. And that student, parents, the principal, and a couple, the couple of sponsors were the table, get to have lunch on April 13th. So that's the end of that. So, yes.
Did you want to say something about the, when, at the end, we'll talk about how we have to put something on the agenda?
About, I'm sorry.
The Wellness Committee you had mentioned.
Oh. Yeah, good point. Since we're re while following your lead on being changeable, we'll say being flexible. Okay, very good. I was thinking about that also, and I'm on enough committees to keep me very busy. And I asked Dolly to take my place on the Wellness Committee, and she agreed to do that. And I'm very happy to relinquish that if it's okay with everybody.
And she's going to be busy.
I think that's great. Y'all are collaborating, working together and finding ways to make us all have an impact. Good job, y'all.
So it has been a long time since we reported out on what we've been doing. And I have, oh, eight or nine items. So the first thing, the most recent thing I did was a visit to PlayCV. I went to Chabot Elementary and observed a TKK class. The kids were very involved in the work they were doing. The teacher was so enthusiastic. Wonderful proctor. I I was able to see the first through fifth graders. They had made catapults. And at Canyon Middle School was a cooking class. And but the thing I remember the most was they were practicing for their play right next door, Annie Junior. And so I got to see them dancing and and singing in the NPR room. And that was really terrific. I saw Amy Ramos from PlayCV, wonderful human being. And Tina Sax was there also in PlayCV. Number two, Equity Team with Jason and Dot Theodore was there in the Equity Team. Number three, I visited Redwood and saw, you know, Kenny Khan. I did this on the 27th because I wanted to kind of pop over there before the scholarships were, applications were due to kind of encourage kids to apply for scholarships. And also just visit and see the campus. I met with Joe Loss. Just kind of gleaned from her some of her institutional knowledge from all the years that she was a board member and ask her, you know, suggestions and things I should do and that kind of thing. Number five was the Castro Valley Education Foundation Meeting. Their fundraiser and and fun activity, they have, going to have a photo booth and everything for spring Into Education is May 5th or on Cinco de Mayo. And I encourage people to go to that. I'll be there and I hope other board members and and people here can go as well. Let's see, number, that was five, six, a regional policy board. I could go to another page and report on that, but I'm going to kind of hurry. PAC Meeting, Parent Advisory Committee, Special Ed Department. They sent out a survey to parents. Number eight, all of us were at the CTA Board Member Breakfast, all all five of us. Yay, what a great showing. And on Friday, I'm going to be going to the compassionate dialogue and learn, learn more about ORNR on Friday and also get to see my teacher friends. I'm so happy to be able to go. Yeah.
Thank you, trustee Adams. Vice President Kuziak?
I don't have a lot to say. Um, Quentin, we're going to try to make an effort to come see you. Trustee Raymond, thank you very much. I've been reflecting on, I thought, and this is pointed at you, Superintendent Amadi. I know things are really challenging right now in Iran. And I was reflecting a lot on here, we are trying to build a health center, a comprehensive health center in our school. And there's a place in this world right now where girls are being attacked for being student, going to school. And just that contrast has made me reflect on that and just I, my heart's with you and your family. And I'm, I always appreciate your vulnerability and sharing your, your personal experience here at our board meeting. So thank you. That's all.
Superintendent Amadi?
And with this change, I will just bring back the page that we have, the different committees. And for you to reapprove, since that had to be approved. And that's it. And before you leave, I need to get information on your college so we can get your gown for graduation. It's coming. In May, but thank you.
That's it.
I only attended the Union Breakfast with y'all. And I appreciate the presentation tonight, the conversation, and I hope you all have a lovely evening. Good night.